Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's meeting of the City of Hillsburg City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency. And this is a regular meeting. It is August 20th, 2018. And let the record reflect, we're all present this evening. There was a special meeting prior to this meeting, and I just want to report out that no action was taken and direction was given to staff. So with that, I'd like to ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please. Okay, so moving on, we have an item to approve the agenda.
Move for approval? Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going on to approving the minutes of July 23rd, which is a special meeting, as well as August 6th, which was a regular meeting. And before we approve those minutes, I just wanted to make sure, because there were some people absent, that we do have an understanding of what those minutes reflect in terms of future action. And I just hope that before we approve them, we review what we said we were going to do at the end of those, because I think the minutes are fine, but I would like to make sure that the movement to do what we said we're going to do at the end of those meetings continues to progress. So specifically, the meeting, the joint meeting between, with the City Council and the Community Housing Committee, we want to make sure we get that meeting. So I believe City Managers assured me that we're trying to get all council members to be present for a meeting with the city, the city, our appointed Community Housing Committee to move forward, to continue the discussion of affordable housing and funding. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Move for approval? All those in favor? Or actually, I need a second, huh?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for looking over those minutes. All right, it is my pleasure to move forward to the announcements and presentations this evening. I'm so glad you're all in the room, because it's a historical moment. And I'm going to go ahead and recognize an employee, an employee that most of us have a lot of connection with, and we absolutely want to do this well. And we also want to make sure that everybody realizes no momentum is, this is a big moment in the city of Hillsburg's history. And I would like to invite a guest to come forward. But I want to start, I guess, by saying we have a couple things to give, sorry. So to begin, as everybody knows, the city clerk, and I wrote this, so I'm just going to read it, is the heart, is the heart of the whole operation. And we've had the pleasure of Maria as our city clerk for numerous years. And I'm going to read what's best to be read, because this is, this is important. So this is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Hillsburg to recognize city clerk Maria Coriel on the occasion of her retirement. Dramatic pauses here. Whereas Maria began her career with the City of Hillsburg as an intern while attending Hillsburg High School. She was hired after graduating as an office clerk in the administrative office in September of 1980, and was appointed to city clerk in June of 1986. Whereas Brigitte Mansell, Mayor of the City of Hillsburg, says, "Maria is the heart of Hillsburg City Hall. She welcomes, she trains, she educates, she organizes, and has supported numerous new city council members and townspeople as they navigate the various political papers and city records systems. Maria has witnessed numerous changes and consistently demonstrates integrity and unparalleled professionalism." Whereas Eric Ziedrich, who is also a former city council member and mayor, says, "What I appreciate most about Maria is she had answers ready before council members had developed their questions regarding a myriad of subjects. She was amazing in her ability to maintain a professional, business-like composure when the average citizen or staff member would have popped a cork." And whereas David McHaleen, City Manager of the City of Hillsburg, says, "I cannot imagine coming into City Hall and not seeing Maria. I will miss Maria's innate ability of keeping me out of trouble." And whereas Jerry Edinger, founder of Edinger Enterprises, says, and also former council member and mayor and planning commission, "One of the hardest things for me to adjust to after leaving the city council in 1980 was not being able to see Maria and her smiling face each day." And whereas Ray Holly, managing editor of our local newspaper and Sonoma West Publishers, says, "Years ago, my wife and I were in a gift shop and spotted a coffee mug imprinted with 'She Who Must Be Obeyed.'" Oh, she, I'm sorry, I'm reading that wrong. "She Who Must Be Obeyed." She Who Must Be Obeyed. We knew immediately that she had to get it for Maria, who always does her job with style and fiercely protects the city. Whereas colleagues say Maria is an inspiration to all city clerks. She's one of the hardest-working people I've ever met, and her work ethic is untouchable. Maria is truly the glue that keeps everything together. And whereas if Maria were ever to write a book, a novel, can't you imagine this? What she has seen and experienced in Hillsburg, I'm going to let that sink in, just think about that, 1986 to now, 1980 to now. Based on her 38 years employed by the city, it would no doubt be a New York Times bestseller and definitely made into a couple movies or a mini-series or whatever, okay. And whereas the staff and council will forever remember Maria for her dedication to the citizens of Hillsburg and her commitment to excellence, and wish her all the best in her well-deserved retirement. So therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Hillsburg hereby expresses its sincerest appreciation and thanks to Maria for her exemplary and dedicated service to the citizens and the city of Hillsburg, and extends their best wishes to her and her family for a long and happy retirement." So I would like to present this to you, and feel that, everyone can feel that, and please applaud. And there are so many people that could be here, in fact, there will be more people we're going to be honoring Maria this week. But this evening in the City Council chambers, I would like to invite forward Carrie Lindiger, I'm saying it wrong, but you're going to correct it, come forward from Mike McGuire, State Senator McGuire's office, because this is a very big occasion for the city of Hillsburg, and we wanted to make sure that we honored you tonight in public in this way. So welcome, Carrie.
There we go. My name is Carrie Lindecker. I am the District Director for Senator Mike McGuire. I'm here today to present a joint state legislative resolution to Maria on behalf of Senator McGuire and Assembly Member Jim Wood, both of who, of course, worked with Maria when they were serving on the Hillsburg City Council. They would have loved to be here, of course, there in Sacramento during the final days of their legislative session. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I will just add to that, which was great from the city. "Whereas Maria, during her decades-long tenure, has provided invaluable assistance not only to her fellow municipal staff members and the city manager, but also to Hillsburg's elected city council members, including former council members who now serve in the California State Legislature." I talked to Senator McGuire this morning about Maria, and he asked me to just pass along a few things. He said Maria could always be trusted for sound strategic advice, that she was always the go-to for information, and if you were wrong, she would let you know with the two-by-four that you always knew where you stood with Maria. And of course, that she will be greatly missed, and we wish her all the best in her much-deserved retirement.
Thank you so much. And again, just want to make sure everyone realizes we're not done celebrating, but we are being asked to not get Maria too emotive. But it is a challenge to not want to talk a whole lot more about you, and we will this week. Thank you so much for coming. And again, if anyone from the dais would like to say anything briefly, I'm not asking, like, I know we're going to be meeting, but this is a transition, and I know that we are very fortunate to have had the 38 years. But I definitely am going to say that the city is different without you and will be different. And you've done so much good work with records, this whole transition into the new building. Does anybody else have anything they want to say? I mean, just briefly, just...
Maria, I just wish you great happiness in your retirement. I really appreciate all the things that you've helped me with, and over the years, you've helped a lot of people. And you really deserve to be happy and go explore the world, and have a great time, and don't worry about stuff.
I just wanted to say a few things, is, you know, having never been in politics before, the transition from the campaign side, with the amount of paperwork you have to fill out, you know, I feel very lucky that my introduction and that transition phase where you're doing the campaigning and then shifting over to council meetings, the advice, the forms, making sure the forms are filled out right and submitted on time and to the right place, and right there to answer all the questions and just reviewing things is, I can't thank you enough for that. It's a scary thing to go through, and it was always nice to be able to get the guidance that was appropriate. So I really appreciate helping me grow from candidate to sitting up here, and really thank you. And then the other thing I'll say is, you have to be really careful about what you email Maria. I don't know if you saw a picture out there. From my high school yearbook photo that Maria then took and has pasted over my picture out there, so, yeah, Maria did that. I know it was you, because that's who I sent that picture to. So just those kind of warnings, we really don't need to worry about anymore now. Thank you very much. I really appreciate everything you've done for me and for the city and for the council, and just enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
It's hard for me to say things, because I've been here a year and a half, you know, it's been such a blip compared to what you brought to the city. I will say this, you know, it can be very, very stressful up here. And the process of going through the election process and going through the agenda and all the rules and everything that we have to worry about, and your presence is, I got to tell you, is very calming. And I think that has been, for me, your biggest contribution to my experience tonight, and I will miss that.
And I would just like to thank you for your accessibility, your helpfulness, your friendliness, and just your consistent level of professionalism. You've really been our rock. So thank you so much, Maria.
And again, Maria, I just want to echo what they're saying about your willingness to support people when they're new at something, and that's huge. You are the face, and I'll never forget the first time I saw you and going in your office and getting grounded and just knowing that you were going to tell me what to do, and I was going to do it, and it was going to work. And it always did work. And just really want to thank you so much for all the work you've done for this city, because really, this city is a success in so many ways. And I think the greatest success is the people, and you fostered a really communicative, friendly atmosphere that makes people really feel comfortable to ask questions and also to learn. So I echo that. I've learned a lot, and thanks for all your help. So we have more to say to you, but this is really, this is your last meeting as a city council, city clerk position, and I'm not going to get into new people, right?
If I may, briefly, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say, Maria, it brings me no pleasure to know that all these compliments are really killing her inside right now, because this, she hates, she really doesn't, 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 this isn't one of her things, but I think it's really important that we recognize that Maria really exemplifies what public service is. If you take a look at her experience, she's got an incredible story, which someday she'll tell or not. But I think she really exemplifies what public service is, always looking out for the best interest of the city. And can I tell you how many times she just catches little things prior to going out to council meetings? She has been there, done that, I'm sure she has a t-shirt as well. But she will be, she will be missed, and I really appreciate all the work that she's done for the city. On my behalf, I've known Maria for 13 years, as long as I've been with the city, and I've learned a lot from her. And she will be definitely missed. But I have no reservations that she will put this behind her, and she will be moving on to the best retirement has to offer. And so she definitely deserves that. So I really appreciate the work and everything you've done for the city to help us throughout your tenure, and it's much appreciated. So thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Maria.
I just want to say thank you for the kind words. It's been a real pleasure working for the city.
Maria, and I do want you to write the book, I really do. I think it would be an amazing thing, and you have supporters that will put money forward for the, you know, you're really a wonderful woman, and so proud to be on this earth with you at this time doing the work. It's great. So thank you, City Manager, for adding that about public service. All right, so we're not moving on, because we're going to celebrate more, but we're moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is City Manager Report. So do you have anything to share, City Manager?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, moving on then to public comments on non-agenda items. So this is an invitation for you to come forward and speak for up to three minutes, is what we're hoping. But pursuant to the Brown Act, we are not to consider any issues or make any, take any action on your request, but we are here to hear you and to listen. So if you could come forward, say your name and address if possible, and then be, under the three minutes, we have a visual, but I will let you know too. So are you ready? Thank you. Please come forward. Welcome.
Oh, thank you, better, okay. Okay, my name is Beth Swatsky. I've lived full-time in Hillsburg since 2008, part-time since 2002. June 19th, 2017, the Cherry Site Adaptive Reuse and Development Project came out with schematic scheme and a timeline. It's very exciting. In August of 2016, I wrote the following letter, and I'd like to read it now. It was sent to people who had assisted me since May of 2016 through August of 2016 on working on the Cherry Project purity building. Hi all, first, this is a thank you to all the city council. Second, the rest of you who are not able to attend the meeting, this is an update. The council's vote on the Cherry Project/Purity Building redevelopment project Monday night is why we take part in local politics. They did not vote for option one, nor did they vote for the other three. They listened to those of us who wanted to retain the building, to those who would be okay with as a parking lot, and to those who offered other alternatives. The result was a vote for a compromise. I paraphrase. Keep the facade of the building and a portion, 30 to 40 feet, for restrooms, catering, kitchen, and other uses. Suggestions from the audience, education, museum, small events. The remainder, reconfiguration for parking and for the farmer's market home. The parking lot would be environmentally friendly, allowing for drainage, and not just pavement. Now, if you've ever seen the schematics, we actually have an overview video on the city website. If you Google schematic-design-fly-around, you'll get to see it. The timeline as of the July information, 2017, was: Design Review, July, early 2018. This is all on the website, by the way. Explore Funding Options and Develop Operating Forma, August to December. Finalize Funding. Plan, Specifications, Bidding, second half of 2018. 2019, Construction. For those of you who saw my letter to the editor, I'm not interested in 2040 anymore. I want to know what's happening in 2018, 2019. To me, it is still a priority, and I think it is to other people. Thank you, I apologize. I've got guests sitting at my dinner table at home. I came because this was very important.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on items not on the agenda? Welcome, thank you.
Hello. Can you hear me? I think so. My name is Jenny Levine-Smith. I live on Samantha Court, and I've lived in Hillsburg for the last 10 years. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to talk about the ESTAT process that wrapped up last week. I participated in it, and it was a wonderful experience. And I know that many of you participated in it as well, and it was great to have you there. I thought it was so wonderful, first of all, to have an outside group of experts come in and help us. I think it's so great to have somebody who doesn't necessarily have skin in the game come and sort of help us synthesize our priorities. I think they did a really, really great job of sort of getting Hillsburg, which was really impressive, considering they were not here for very long. I'm excited for the most, the thing that excited me the most there was the idea of creating a master plan beyond our general plan, so that we as a community can thoughtfully and intentionally plan and build the Hillsburg that we want to see in 20 years and know where we're going. I was also really excited about their idea of taking our public spaces, our schools, our pathways, and connecting them to one another. I think that's a really interesting and exciting way to bring the community as a whole together. Some other highlights for me were the idea of getting artists involved in projects really early, so that instead of having art be something that just gets sort of put on a public building at the end, that it's part of the planning process and built into it. I was very happy to hear the expert on affordable housing say that we are not built out, and that there's really a lot of ways for us to actually have our affordable housing goals met. I also love the idea of mixed-income housing within each neighborhood, and the idea of having sort of a small commercial hub and center within each neighborhood as well. I'm lucky enough to live very close to Summer's Market, but not every neighborhood has a Summer's Market, and we should. So I'm here before the council to ask you to help us as a community take what happened last week and keep it going. It would be really wonderful if the council could help find a space that would be dedicated to the meetings that are going to have to happen going forward in order to keep this momentum going. It would be wonderful if the city council would put ESTAT on your agenda, so that instead of just having us be able to talk about it, that we could hear you talk about it as well. And I really think probably the most important thing in my mind is to prioritize getting this master plan process started as soon as possible, because a master plan, if done well, will have feedback from the entire community and buy-in and input uncreated by the community as a whole. It should be slow and steady, and so we should get it started right away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on non-agenda items? You're invited. Welcome.
Hi, City Council. My name is Jennifer Uch, and I'm a small business owner. I've been here in Hillsburg for 14 years. And I'm here to address this, not issue, but the ESTAT of coming up with an idea of a big plan for Hillsburg. For the first time in about a year or two years, I'm really excited about the forming and the positioning that we can put ourselves in in Hillsburg. And being an artist, I'm seeing such an amazing buzz. I'm on the board of the Hillsburg Center of the Arts, and we just had our board retreat meeting, and the big vision and the big dreams that we have, I feel that Hillsburg can really be an essential part of Northern California, forming communities and successful arts programs and education. And I would just love to see this, the vision with ESTAT and the support that we have to continue to buzz forward. And I'm curious just what the support is of the city council, and I'd just like for some kind of dialogue in the future to move forward of what our support is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address us on a non-agenda item? Welcome.
Good evening. Deborah Kravitz, Manavista. I wanted to talk about two issues that are somewhat related. Can you hear me now? It's on. First, I wanted to talk about the general plan update and encourage the city to make that a priority and not push that out into the future. I know you haven't had a chance yet to dive into the CHC's recommendations, but when you'll get there, you'll see that even if the council favors the recommendations, you can't fully implement some of them unless there are updates to the general plan. We really need to take a look at both zoning and land use, and my understanding is you can't amend those except in conjunction with updates to the general plan. So I really encourage you to make sure that is on the agenda sooner rather than later. With respect to the master plan, I would also like to see that be a priority and see the city really support that. We have a unique opportunity right now to harness the enthusiasm and the civic engagement that the city has just really exhibited in a way that I've never seen in my 10 years in Hillsburg, and I don't want that to dissipate. I think we really need to capitalize that. Literally, there were hundreds and hundreds of residents that turned out to participate in the ESTAT process, and one of the primary recommendations that came out of that were to work on a master plan. I know that doing a master plan right now will put a strain to some extent on city resources, but the good news is that if we create a good master plan, it'll really save city resources in the future. A lot of the effort that goes into ad hoc planning and development energy can really be knocked out and taken care of by creating a good master plan now. So I hope you'll prioritize that.
Thank you. Is anyone else wanting to speak on an on-agenda item? Welcome.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for your support of the ESTAT process, and I look forward to your continued support. I was excited to look at your goals and see that there's a lot of congruence between what the ESTAT looked at and suggests we attend to and your goals. In development, you're doing hotels tonight, and that's clearly part of thinking about economic diversity and what we need to do in the city. Community housing, the ESTAT suggests we look at housing for everyone, and that includes both affordable housing, the missing middle, as well as homelessness. Community services, you have an arts and culture program on your agenda already, and they made a point of talking about how we need to integrate arts in many of our existing processes in ways that are much more dynamic, as someone mentioned earlier. And finally, connectivity is one of the major points coming from the strategic plan that you put on your goals, connecting the river, the parks, and everything else. We're really excited. Hundreds of people looked at the slideshow online, thousands have watched the video, and we think this is a moment in Hillsburg's future to latch on to this opportunity. We need to wait somewhat patiently for the final report, which will come in 60 to 90 days, and will be much more detailed and specific to their experience and data collection from Hillsburg. They worked from almost a gigabyte of information about the city, almost every significant document on the city's website. They all walked away with a flash drive that has it. They don't have to wait to download it, it was previously downloaded for them. So I hope you're as excited as I am about the future of this. There are four initiatives that we're launching around the major themes of the ESTAT slideshow and presentation, and I'm sure you'll hear more about that. Thank you much again for your support, and I look forward to going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the council on a non-agenda item? You're welcome to come forward.
Good evening. Tim Unger, Plaza Street. Maria, congratulations. Rather than be redundant and mention some of the elements that people have already commented upon around ESTAT, one thing I'd like to ask the city council to do on behalf of the citizenry, the 900 people who attended two meetings collectively on Monday and Wednesday, and the 5,700 people who have downloaded the slideshow, is to please agendize a discussion about pursuing a general plan in parallel with a master plan and have a conversation about that. I know the public's going to be interested in listening and participating as well. I know the public's going to be interested in listening and participating as well. The key recommendation about this inparallel master and general plan is really the underpinning for the recommendations that the AIA made on behalf of all the data that was collected, compiled, and digested on their part in a sprinted marathon that took place three days last week. So many people participated. The fact that the city council was represented there, we were thrilled about. And we consider you, not only the ESTAT steering committee, but I believe that all the people that participated, to be partners in this with us. And we look forward to being on the same side of the table with you as we move forward to pursue these initiatives and bring them to fruition. This mural on the side is a depiction of the work that was done throughout the course of the week. And it is being gifted to the city and presented to the mayor tonight. And we're hoping that this becomes something that the community can hang its hat on and become more of a permanent display of this commitment and possibly be hung here in City Hall someplace. We've looked forward to working with you in partnership and, again, making this thing happen. The critical point, again, is inparallel pursuing the general plan with the master plan. And we hope that tonight you can agendize that for a very near-term meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor. My name is Ariel Kelly. I live on Grove Street. So I want to echo some of the comments, but also add. So as you heard, we had a large amount of attendance, and not just from the folks that you would normally expect, but we had attendance at the ESTAT by a broad base of residents. And that was possible because of the backbone support that was given by our steering committee. And the steering committee was made up of founding members Todd Everett, Janice Watkins, and Denise Hunt, who wrote the application to the AIA, and Marilyn Joyce, who took that application and used her graphic design expertise to bring it to life and artfully transform it into an invitation to the American Institute of Architects that they could not refuse. And we also had a beautiful website designed by Joan Burrell. And participants on our steering committee, such as Tim Meinken, Brian Summer, Gina Reiner, Dick Bogarsky, Will Seppi, Jim Winston, Eric Drew, Carla Howell, Mark McMullin, Julian Cohen, Don McEnhill, Herman Velazquez, Holly Fox, John Warden, Judy Voight, Julian Gervaud, Ken Bukanyani, Lori Walker, Pamela Swan, Pat Caruba, Whitney Hopkins, Mitch Connor, Ray Lucasi, and two very important additions to our steering committee, Rhea Borja and City Manager David McHaleian, who started attending our meetings and getting engaged, not just coming to the meetings, but leveraging city resources, cities' avenues for communication through social media, through posting on websites. And that gave a huge bump, right, at the right time when we were really wanting to make a big final push. So I want to say thank you to both Rhea and David for your participation. During the ESTAT event, we needed maps, we needed plans. And we called on Maya and people from the Utilities Department, Public Works, and they were able to pull those maps together, immediately send over links to plans. So thank you, city staff, for your participation as well. And our city council members, Bridgette Mansell, I know you attended so many of those meetings. Thank you. Dave Hagley, Vice Mayor, you were attending many of those meetings. And all of you, I really appreciate your support. Joe, I know you were able to attend one of the working group sessions and also the events on Monday and Wednesday night. Thank you for being there. And we also had a preliminary visit with the AIA that many of you spent many hours meeting with them in April when we were really framing some of those issues. And Leah Gold, you attended several of those, and Sean McCaffrey as well. So thank you very much for being there. I will add, this mural was designed by a woman named Jessie Teague, who is an artist. Her daughter lives in Healdsburg, and she happened to be in town, Mary Rob Wilson, who I know through the Moms Group. And Mary Rob was here for the weekend, and her mom was visiting from the East Coast. And then we told her what we were up to, and she offered her services. She does this professionally. And she was able to stay an extra couple days and design this for us based on the community feedback at Monday's session. So Jessie Teague, amazing artist. So out of the ESTAT, we really are looking to continue to build on that energy. We would love to see a dedicated space at the community center that we could hub some of this work out of moving forward. We would love to identify a staff member from the city who could liaise with the team leads as we work to advance the recommendations of the AIA. And we want to prepare to receive that full report in 90 days by agendizing the ESTAT for discussion of the council so we can talk about a master plan and how to leverage the energy in the community and build on the enthusiasm and engagement of our residents that we're seeing. There is a buzz in this community, and we want to catalyze that and capture it and take it to the next level. So what's next for the ESTAT? So we have a steering committee celebration this Wednesday night. And we are continuing to share the presentation and slides with the broad community members so everyone knows what took place on Wednesday night. We put out sign-ups and survey links where residents can sign up to get to work on the four initiatives, which is arts, parks and connectivity, housing, and a master plan. And we already have over 150 people who are ready to join those committees and roll up their sleeves and get to work. So we are excited to do that in partnership with the city. Thank you very much, and please enjoy this beautiful mural. We hope it can find a home at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I just want to mention that we do have things we want to say about this very rich process. And even though the Brown Act says the mayor can in fact decide to address if there is direct questions, and so we will get to that, but I do want to open it still to public comment. So thank you. And again, opening it up for public comment on non-agenda items, welcome. Thank you.
Hello there. Brian Summer. I don't know if you're aware, but there is a horrible, annoying echo in this room. We paid a lot of money for the renovation.
We are aware.
Good. So yeah, so I think we're probably going to talk about something divisive later in the evening, but let's talk about ESTAT. ESTAT was incredibly unifying. So many people came together, people who don't agree on certain issues and were able to agree that we needed some help for our community and we needed some expert opinions based in fact to help us move forward. And the key takeaway, I think, has already been mentioned, is this master plan idea. One of the architects said that basically, within a two-month period, we would be able to look at the general plan and the master plan and come up with some sort of plan through a consultant or through some sort of effort on how we can use the existing land that we have in town to use. And so I hear things like, that's a two-year process. And I just have to say that we're all really excited. You have a lot of energy and enthusiasm. And hopefully, it's something that we can move on a little bit sooner than two years. And hopefully, it's something that we can move on with, you know, more expert people that do this for a living versus opinion. And I think that, I don't want to be irreverent, but, you know, I want to clap for everybody who came together from the community, for everybody. It was a great process, and no one was left out. And I think that ultimately, through your service and what you guys do, is what you're about. And it was just really nice to see the whole community come together.
I would echo, the echo is a problem. So I'm not sure what to do in this chambers, but it is an issue, and I just turned off the air conditioning. So just as a comfort level, I'm not sure if people are getting stuffy out there, but I turned it off to have better audibility. But City Manager, I don't know what we can do, but it is an issue. So we'll just...
Maria's working with the volume. We thought this was addressed last time through the call-in. Apparently, that's not the issue. So we have an AV issue which will be addressed. I've already sent an email first thing. Meeting started to staff for tomorrow morning. Unfortunately, we're going to have to grin and bear it tonight and get through it. And we thought this was because of the call-in last time, but apparently it's not.
Thank you. All right. Welcome.
I'll bet if I covered this up and belted it out, we wouldn't have an echo.
Good evening. I'm Marilyn Joyce, and I am going through ESTAT recovery. I'm not there yet. Personally, I've put in about 11 months in this process. And being part of the marketing and communication team along with Carla and Gina and Joan and Lori, it was our job to fill the gym and to reach out to, as has been said, all of the community and make people feel welcome. When I first started this, my idea of sustainability is the ecosystem. It's climate. It's groundwater. It's our ecological footprint. And those things are very important to me. But where I've come to in my understanding now is that a lot of those things are solvable. But what has been in the way is that we don't always work well together. And that by bringing a community together, by doing what we said in the application, enhancing our social fabric, weaving that so that it's stronger and it's harmonious and it makes a beautiful tapestry, is what energizes me and gives me hope. And that when we go forward, when we get into the implementation, I want to bring that spirit, that spirit of collaboration, participation, transparency, where we do things in the open, that we know that each of us are a piece of a jigsaw puzzle and that the picture isn't complete without every one of those people. I was seeing Letty Romero over at her office a week and a half ago. And I said, you know, the one thing that I feel is going to come out of this ESTAT, because we don't know what the recommendations will be. The one thing that I really feel is that our Latino community and the rest of us are going to forge a new connection. And I really feel that that happened on those two nights in the gym. You know, I mean, I know it was chaotic having the translation, but it was a beautiful thing. And just a little bit of feedback from the AIA. When we met with them after Wednesday night, they said, you know, there is so much, there's so much expertise in this community. These are really intelligent, talented people. But the thing that we see the most that is unique about Healdsburg is that you have compassion for each other.
Thank you. Is anyone else wanting to address the city council this evening on a non-agenda item? Okay, well, thank you again for all that rich information about a very special last week for me. And it is in our council protocols that the mayor may in fact address questions if they are asked in terms of just remarks, because there were five different things mentioned. So I heard ESTAT wants to be on the agenda for the city council. I heard they want a physical place. I heard that they're awarding or giving us this mural to represent a tangible way that we had an experience in our city that was a culmination of a lot of work from the citizens group that tried to bring people together. So that mural is a tangible way to represent that, and they've presented it to us. And also, the master plan, general plan, and just trying to make sense out of that with the update to the general plan and looking at that. So with all that, you know, it's really easy to just go, thank you, and protocol says we're going now to the next item. But as mayor, I would be remiss if I did not echo what I heard, and again, echo is the word tonight, that it's critical that we all really take this time to get together and stay and, like people said, harness this. The momentum is here. So I hope my council members can support some of these things in getting this on the agenda. So perhaps at the end of this evening, we can look at future agenda items, and that's what a protocol is for us. And we can look at possibly agendizing the ESTAT and having a conversation so that we do in fact honor the time, energy, love, support, financial support we gave. I mean, other people gave. There's just so much love and energy. And I just don't want to just walk it and say, okay, we'll figure it out later. This is a really important date, August 20th, for lots of reasons. So I just want to mention that. So perhaps when we get into a later part of the evening, when everyone's really chipper and ready to go and energy surges at nine o'clock, we can have that conversation about what we want to put on our agenda. Because it's just critical that we don't just put this under and say, thanks for the poster. Thank you for your time. It was fun. We had, you know, a nice time. It was a wonderful experience for me, being very actively interested in being there as a council member. So I just want to clarify that I don't want this to be slipped under the rug and we move to the next item. So thank you for listening, and again, thank you for your work and everybody that comes to public comment. ESTAT was rich, and we're not done. And we absolutely receive and accept that gift of a tangible mural of what I think is beautiful about our town, lots of the landmarks and the natural and the sustainability. So thank you, everybody. We are going to move on, but I want to thank all the ESTAT representatives and also just the energy that was put forth and the talent that came from the outside as well as the inside to bring that all together. So with that, and we're going to move on, it's hard to do that, but we're going to the consent calendar. And there are a few items here. I think we're going to have a motion here to accept some of them, and others we're going to maybe...
Yeah, Mayor, I need to pull item 5C.
Okay.
And I'll need to recuse myself from this item as I have a conflict or a potential conflict. I could receive more than $500 in income from property affected by this decision. So what I would like to do is, if there are no other items that are going to be pulled...
I would like to pull D, the ordinance amending Healdsburg Municipal Code Section related to disposition of surplus supplies and equipment as well. So I'd like to pull that.
So I'd like to approve A and B on the consent calendar, and then I can come back after whatever happens on C.
Okay. So with that...
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
I think you need real talk.
Oh, I'm sorry. City Clerk, thank you.
Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Councilor McCaffrey? Councilor Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hagley?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
Yes. With that, we will move to item C.
If you could just wait for Vice Mayor Hagley to leave the room.
Yeah, I will. I'm just going to do transitional here. So we're going to go to item C, and then we will go to item D.
So was there any discussion on item C, or is it just that Vice Mayor Hagley needed to recuse? Okay, I'll move for approval of item C.
Second.
I'd like to note for the record that item C is adoption of an ordinance upon second reading by title only and waiving reading of the text. Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Councilor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilor Noyokas?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so we can call our vice mayor back into the chambers. Thank you so much. And moving to D. So why am I pulling D? Well, I did receive some input on this, and I was happy to hear that our director is here this evening to answer some direct questions. But for those of you that don't remember, and again, I guess the protocol would be for you to share what this is, and then I can share my concerns with passing this or changing our ordinance. So if you want to start out, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Heather I. Paladia, Admin Services Director. The recommended action before you tonight is to adopt ordinance number 1178 upon second reading by title only and waiving further reading of the text, amending Healdsburg Municipal Code Section 3.24.130 of the Healdsburg Municipal Code related to the disposition of surplus supplies and equipment. As the code currently exists, before we can sell equipment, we have to first present it to local nonprofits and the schools. There is sometimes equipment that is not appropriate to go to the nonprofits and schools, such as a police motorcycle. And therefore, we are asking that the city manager be who declares where we go with the equipment.
Okay, so the reason I pulled it is, one, I didn't get to ask you a direct question about this. And what I'm getting from the public school, and it wasn't... The concern I have is for years and years, the ordinance has been suggestive of a value to give surplus items, first dibs, to the public schools of Healdsburg and then to go to the nonprofits, which are, you know, as you stated. So really, the school was, the protocol has always been, the school is the first place you'd go, the public school, and then you would go out. So I totally understand a motorcycle vehicle... So I totally understand a motorcycle vehicle would not make sense. But I guess what I'm wondering is if you look at the actual language, I don't know what we're gaining from this. If anything, I think the public schools are losing. And so I did hear from the Healdsburg Unified School District Business Director who said, thank you for reaching out, because he was concerned about it. I told him what it was, and then he said, we understand the desire to eliminate the requirement to offer surplus items to the Unified School District first, as timing can be critical, and many items may be of no interest. However, we are not in the business of acquiring and reselling items from the city, so we would only be interested in items that would directly benefit our students or staff. So perhaps there could be some conditional language that could be added indicating the city's desire to offer relevant items to the district when time permits. So again, just wondering why we're eliminating that step. I understand that there is this potential that the schools would be notified, that as a taxpayer, and I hear it from people, they like the stuff that's bought with city money to stay in a public system rather than selling it. I understand if it's a fire truck, I understand if it's a police motorcycle, but if it's a desk, if it's a chair, if it's supplies. So I just want to make sure we're not changing an ordinance before we understand the ramifications and the values that we're changing if we don't give it first to the school or this nonprofit that's the second in order, the way it's written now. So we're changing an ordinance, we're amending an ordinance, and I'm just concerned that we won't be offering things to the public school. So I'm just worried about that.
Won't it still be a policy, though, to do so?
Well, I'm asking that, that's what I'm asking. So yeah, let's find out what the policy would be if we eliminated it from the ordinance.
Where the items are appropriate to offer it to the school, that will definitely be the first spot. For instance, we are going to be having, what I'm calling is a garage sale for the items after the City Hall construction project. We have a lot of items that would be appropriate to offer to the schools and the nonprofits. We're going to be sending out a flyer inviting them to come to the items. What we're trying to do is, it's not necessarily a timing issue, but it's more of what's appropriate to go to the schools and what's not.
So is it in writing somewhere that will happen in the future? Because that's what ordinances are. It's so hard to get them made, let alone we're getting amendments. So if we amend this, my fear is that we don't have the language that says, not just because you're a nice person, you're going to call the school district or send them a quick email and say, would you like this? Because they did take our parking vehicle, I don't know exactly what it was, but they did. I got a letter from the superintendent that said they appreciated that. So I'm just questioning, what does it guarantee in the future that this city is in fact going to make that the next step after they, you know, decide they don't need it anymore?
It will be an internal policy that's written.
So it's something written down?
Correct.
And so it'll be a policy for the schools, then nonprofits?
Correct. It'll be an internal operations policy.
Okay, because I just didn't get that, and I didn't get to ask you before, and I was concerned about the change that seemed to affect the public's money and where it's going to go. Okay, so it'll be written down somewhere?
It will be a written, internal policy.
Okay, as long as it's written down, because I didn't get that before and you weren't here for me to ask.
I'll move to approve item D on the consent calendar. Second.
And I'd like to note for the record, it's an adoption of an ordinance upon second reading by title only and waiving reading of the text. Councilwoman Gold?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hagley?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell.
And thank you for making that an internal policy. Okay, all right. So now we're moving on to a public hearing item, and it's the biennial revisions to Local Conflict of Interest Code. So we're going to be adopting a resolution, rescinding a resolution, and adopting revised Local Conflict of Interest Code. And who will be presenting that? City Manager? Oh, that's our City Clerk. Thank you.
Her 38 years have been building up to this.
Mayor Mansell, council members, before you is a proposed resolution which, if adopted, would rescind Resolution Number 98-2006 and adopting a revised Conflict of Interest Code. As far as a little background on this item, the Political Reform Act requires local agencies such as the City of Healdsburg to adopt a local conflict of interest code. The code designates the positions that must disclose economic interest within the city. The Act also requires the city to update this code every two years. And that's what's before you tonight. The proposed revisions are very minor. One, it removes the reference to the Oversight Board, and the other, it updates the list of designated filers to reflect new positions such as Housing Administrator and adding back the Administrative Services Director, revised titles such as Utilities, Conservationalist, and Principal Engineer, and the last would delete positions that have been abolished or no longer make decisions. In our case, is deleting the Community Housing and Development Director, which is no longer a position within the City of Healdsburg. Again, the recommendation is adoption of a resolution which would rescind Resolution Number 98-2006 and adopting a revised Conflict of Interest Code. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions about this? You just all look afraid for some reason, I'm not sure why, but your facial expression indicates you don't want to touch this. But it sounds good to me. I mean, it sounds like you're cleaning up some language, and this was something you discovered, City Clerk?
That's something we had to do over two years, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for getting us up to date and getting us clear, so I appreciate it. So are there any motions? Okay, that's right. Okay, so no questions, I guess, is what I'm asking. Okay, so I'd like to entertain opening public comment, not entertain it, come on up if you'd like to speak on the issue of cleaning up this language. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward, so move it back to the dais and...
I'll offer a resolution of the City Council of the City of Healdsburg, State of California, rescinding Resolution Number 98-2016 and adopting a revised Local Conflict of Interest Code.
I'll second that.
Councilwoman Gold?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hagley?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
Yes, thank you. All right, and moving on now to old business, which is essentially the heart of the meeting tonight, I believe. So we're moving here to item seven, and the old business item is downtown hotel development. We are going to receive a report and provide direction to staff. So thank you very much, Director DeRosa, and I believe it is also your colleague, you might want to introduce him.
Madam Mayor, if I could start the item. So Director DeRosa and Senior Planner Scott Duven will be giving the presentation, mainly Scott will. I wanted to frame the conversation a little bit for council and the public. What we're going to do is we're going to go through the staff report, the presentation. There are really three items of interest in the staff report. One has to do with limiting or capping, if you will, the number of hotel rooms in the PR that supplies the retail area around. We're going to ask council to make a determination on that tonight. The second item has to do with the Commercial District, Downtown Commercial District, and there'll be a presentation on that. We're asking council to basically address the pacing, if you will, of hotel development in that area. And the third item, which is a citywide item with regards to hotel development, will be asking council to consider an inclusionary housing requirement, if you will, for all hotel development throughout the city. At the end of the staff report, of course, council can ask questions throughout, of course. At the end of the staff report, staff will revisit these questions for council, will have some options for you to consider as well. But with that, I think I'll hand it over to our Planning and Building Department and allow them to begin the process, unless you have any questions for me at this point. Thank you.
Really quick, is it audible in here for you with the air conditioning on? Can everyone in the audience hear this? Okay, make sure you tell me, because we need to make sure we just put the air back on. Okay, thank you, Director DeRosa.
And I'll introduce, you know, Senior Planner Scott Dyvan. He did the temporary sign ordinance, and he will be presenting the staff report, and we'll both be available this evening to answer questions. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm not going to repeat this slide since the manager did a pretty good job of summarizing that, but we will go on and provide a little bit of background. This item has been before you in various ways over the last few years, more intensively over the last year and a half, but it kind of stems back to 2014 when the City Commissioner reported called recommendation of future hotel supply growth in Healdsburg, California. This study evaluated 11 potential locations for hotel development, and since that time, Healdsburg has seen substantial growth in the number of hotel rooms located throughout the city. That report was really an investigation of essentially those 11 sites, but wasn't really meant to be an ultimate cap or a sense of what the market could bear in its entirety. In response to the growth in hotel development here in town, back in January of 2017, the council discussed inclusionary housing requirement for the new lodging establishments. This was to support the demand for affordable housing that new hotel development tends to create. Later on that year, or more towards the end of that year in 2017, the City Council heard a presentation on conditional use permits as a means of regulating downtown hotel development. That was followed up again in February with a further discussion of the conditional use permit as a means of regulating or restricting hotels downtown. And then again, in February and March of 2018, the city conducted this community survey and included a couple of questions related to hotels. Those two questions included the ones here in front of you, the first being, thinking about the number of hotels in Healdsburg, do you think there are too many, the right amount, or too few? In response to that, you can see that the community was relatively split right down the middle, 47% thought there was too many, and 47% thought that there was just about the right amount or too few. The second question that was asked as part of that survey was, do you think the rate of growth and development of hotels in Healdsburg is too fast, about right, or too slow? In response to that, the community was, I'd say, predominantly in, sorry, I'm forgetting the word that I'm looking for, but anyways, the majority felt that it was too fast, whereas about 3% thought it was too slow, and about 21% said it was just about right. As a reminder, hotels are permitted by right in the Plaza Retail District, which is the area surrounding the Healdsburg Plaza. They're also permitted by right in the Downtown Commercial District, which is the commercial district surrounding that Plaza Retail District, and they're allowed, subject to a conditional use permit, in the mixed-use district. In all other districts, hotels are not allowed. This exhibit here is a map depicting geographically where hotels are permitted by right or with the CUP. The blue areas that you see are the mixed-use areas, that's where a conditional use permit is required, and the pink area with the little purple center is essentially the Plaza Retail and the Downtown Commercial Districts, which are both within the Downtown Business District here in Healdsburg. This is a list of current overnight lodging establishments. Currently, there's about 458 rooms. This includes hotels as well as bed and breakfasts. You'll see that Dry Creek Inn is the largest with 163 rooms, and then there are many single-digit type of establishments, as well as some medium-sized establishments such as the Hotel Healdsburg with 55, Hotel MR with 16. Currently, there's about 291 rooms under construction or nearing completion. We have Hotel Trio with 122 rooms, H3, which is now being called the Harmon Guest House with 39 rooms, that's nearing completion, and Montage Healdsburg, 130 rooms, which is currently underway. There's also two proposed projects comprising 173 rooms. That's the Mill District, which is looking at a 53-room hotel, and the Quaker Hill Site on the north end of town, which is looking at 120 rooms as part of a larger mixed-use project. And beyond these sites, there's relatively limited opportunities for hotel development on appropriately zoned parcels without land assembly and/or some level of redevelopment of existing uses. This next slide is just the area of focus with regard to recommendations for limiting hotel growth. And again, it's the Downtown Business District, which is primarily comprised of the Downtown Commercial Zoning District and the Plaza Retail District, but there's also a small amount of service commercial, as well as the office and multifamily residential, some public lands, as well as some residential master plan uses up the top. So to get into some of the recommendations that staff has based on the feedback that we've heard from the council and the public during various discussions over the years, the first would be to look at the Plaza Retail District and the opportunity to look at limiting the number of rooms that are allowed within that district, the 67 rooms, which is the current number of rooms that are existing as of 2018. That's the Hotel Healdsburg at 55 rooms, and the Healdsburg Inn on the plaza with 12 rooms. In the Downtown Commercial District, you'll notice you've got quite a few more establishments, but only three that have 16 or more rooms. You have H2 Hotel with 36 rooms, H3 or Harmon Guest House coming online with 39 rooms, and Hotel MR with 16 rooms. The other 11 all have six or fewer rooms. The recommendations that we are proposing with regard to that district are to limit new hotels to those that include no more than 15 rooms, to limit the number of rooms per city block to 15. Let me, sorry, back up a little bit and provide a little more explanation for each of those. So with regard to limiting new hotels to those that include no more than 15 rooms, this would have the effect of limiting the size of any new hotel within the Downtown Commercial District. The second item is to limit the number of rooms per city block to 15. This would have the effect of preventing an over-concentration of hotels within any particular area. Third is to require hotels to locate behind or above first-floor retail space. This would have the effect of helping to maintain the pedestrian scale and activity along the street frontages that are under consideration. The other is to prohibit hotels within the CD zone from fronting on streets, also fronting on residential districts. This is to ensure that hotels do not have an impact on adjacent residential neighborhoods. And the last one is to require new hotels to meet parking requirements on-site, as is the current practice, however not codified. This will ensure that parking issues are addressed with any future hotel projects. This next slide is kind of a graphic depiction of those recommendations and how that would look. And so what you see in the Plaza District is these areas that have a black line in front of them, those frontages essentially are within that district. There's already 67 rooms within that district. You wouldn't be allowed to provide any more hotels along, sorry, along those frontages. The next one to look at is the community or the Downtown Commercial District, which you see here is the yellow frontages are those where that represent blocks where there's already 15 or more hotel rooms on that block. So with that regulation in place, you would not be able to develop a hotel or any additional rooms along those frontages. So for example, North Street, Healdsburg Avenue between Matheson and Mill, Matheson Street between the railroad or Vine and Healdsburg Avenue. Where there is additional opportunity is along Healdsburg Avenue, north of North Street, as well as along Center Street. And you can see this area in gray along East Street that would represent those furnages that would not be allowed to develop a hotel in recognition of an effort to respect the adjacent residential neighborhoods. The other option that staff is recommending is the hotel inclusionary requirement. This is again in recognition that hotels increase the demand for affordable housing. So we're recommending that we require new hotels in any district to offset the housing demand that they create by requiring them to construct on-site affordable units at the same time that the hotel is constructed, or to pay an in-lug fee. This approach requires determining several things. For example, the number of affordable units required per hotel room. Staff is recommending a ratio of five to one, or one unit of affordable housing per five new hotel rooms. Need to determine the type and size of new lodging that would be subject to this requirement. Staff is recommending hotels, projects of five or more units. Need to determine the type of housing required. Staff is recommending very low to moderate income and a mix of one and two bedrooms. And in addition to that, we need to determine an alternative means of compliance. That could be an in-lug fee, as mentioned earlier, dedication of land, conversion of market rate units, or some other mechanism. As an example, the two hotel projects that are currently in the planning stages, there's 173 rooms total. The result of applying the five hotel rooms in affordable unit per would result in 34 affordable units to support those hotels. And again, further analysis would be required to identify what the equivalent... And again, further analysis would be required to identify what the equivalent fee would be if one were to pursue an in-lu fee rather than providing units on-site. Again, staff is looking for feedback and direction from the council on these following recommendations. One is limiting the number of rooms allowed to 67 rooms, the number of rooms that are existing in 2018 within the Plaza Retail District. Other potential alternatives are to do nothing, allow hotel development to continue by right within the Plaza Retail District, or one could expand the limit from the staff's recommendation and allow a number that's above the 67 rooms that currently exist within that district. For the Downtown Commercial District, again, we're recommending to limit the number of rooms for new hotels to 15 rooms, limit the number of rooms per city block to 15, require hotels to locate above or behind first-floor retail space, prohibit hotels within the CD zone from fronting on streets, also fronting on the residential district, and requiring new hotels to meet their parking requirements on-site. Other alternatives are, again, to not do anything and allow hotel development to continue as by right in the Downtown Commercial District, expand or contract the limit of 15 per block from the staff's recommendation. Council could provide an alternative number above 15 rooms per hotel per block or a fewer amount. Consider limiting the hotel development to block face. This would allow additional visitor lodging rooms to be built beyond the staff recommendation, which was looking at the block, which would assume both sides of the street furnages, or consider putting a hard cap on the number of rooms within the Downtown Commercial District, similar to the staff recommendation for the Plaza Retail District. Again, we're looking for council direction and a discussion of the staff report. Based on that direction, we'll begin the process of completing any appropriate studies and making appropriate land use changes, which would first need to be presented to the Planning Commission and then eventually come back to the council for formal adoption.
Thank you.
I'm available for any questions.
So we have a question already, and thank you again for the thorough understanding of the context and where we're headed and what we're doing now, so.
Thanks for the presentation. I just had a question on the parking in-lu versus on-site. So you're saying that you have to have the parking on-site, so that being the in-lu fee does not apply?
What we're looking at for that is, and kind of based on current practices, that we would require for the hotels for the parking to be located on-site. If there's an additional use on that property, for example, retail, which is what we're suggesting as a requirement on those frontages, the retail could either provide that parking on-site if the room is available, or they could avail the retail portion or demand could be subject to the in-lu fee instead.
So the in-lu fee would not be available for the hotel portion?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Okay, Vice Mayor?
On the Downtown Plaza Retail, what was the reason for saying no more?
There's just an option that's out there. There seemed like in a lot of the public comment, as well as some of the discussion that the council had had previously, that there was a desire to see the, kind of recognizing the uniqueness of that particular part of the city, that we maintain a diversity of uses around the plaza and not allow an over-concentration of any one particular use such as hotels, similar to what happened with the wine tasting rooms.
Well, one of the concerns I have is the tasting rooms. If I remember correctly, that was a request from the Planning Commission saying, please clarify this, because it's kind of unclear. But with regard to Plaza Retail, a couple concerns come up with parking. When we're talking about a parking issue, it seems like you would want people closer to the downtown to park and then walk around. So, you know, if we're talking hypothetical, say Downtown Bakery, you know, I don't know if they own the building or not, but say they do, and they're struggling, and the only way they can survive is if they added some hotel rooms up top. And so I'm concerned about limiting options for our existing businesses to be able to stay in business, to help supplement their income if we put a restriction on a cap where maybe the intention was future new hotels. So I'm just kind of wondering what, you know, I guess it comes back to why the cap on the downtown, is there a way to, you know, if down the road, a local business needed hotel rooms, then would they be able to apply for an exemption, or that's it?
I think that goes back to a couple of slides ago when we talked about other options that the council could consider. So for example, you could set that cap at a higher number, which would allow for some level of increased activity along the square if this was the council's direction. So what we tried to do is kind of provide some recommendations as talking points for you, the council, but really ultimately, it's your direction to provide to us.
Questions at this time, and then we'll open it to public comment?
Yes, I have two questions. First, so we don't have any specific, unique findings required for a CUP for hotels that... So for instance, for tasting rooms, we have very specific findings that are required, but for hotels, we don't have any, we just have the, what's the general findings for conditional uses for all kind of generic conditional uses, right? Nothing specific. So nothing about transportation or requiring a shuttle, that kind of thing, currently? Yeah. Second question is, can you clarify the definition of a hotel unit versus a dwelling unit? Like what's, because they're very similar. A hotel unit is a place where someone can live in a very short-term dwelling is someone, a place where someone could live in a long-term. What's the, can you give a planning definition, hard definition of what would constitute a dwelling unit?
I don't know that we have a hard definition, but I think typically what you're going to find is in a residential unit has to have full amenities. It has to have a kitchen, it has to have a bathroom, as well as its living space, whereas a hotel can often just have the living space or the room space along with the bathroom. And so that's kind of, it's that ability to live there independently without needing some sort of outside resource.
So what would be known as a kind of an executive suite, kind of a hotel room, something that, like what Hotel Trio actually offers, which is pretty much a self-contained living experience with a cooking, with cooking and bathroom and bedroom, and that would be, that could be considered a dwelling unit?
I think they may have that potential of converting to that if that was the desire down the road. I think another thing that kind of sets a hotel apart, though, is that they often also have some level of service that comes along with it, such as the reception desk, the house cleaning, et cetera.
Sure, okay.
And one is, just, I think that's a great explanation. One is also clearly a commercial enterprise versus one is, you know, just for day-to-day living.
And I think the last one, correct me if I'm wrong, is parking. I think a hotel requires one per room where you get into residential, the parking requirements become more. So if you were to convert, if that's the ultimate question, a hotel room to a residential, your parking requirements would increase, is my understanding.
Thank you.
And just another question about the semantics or the way we characterize things. So at one point, there was talk about a condominium living experience in Hillsburg that's luxury on the plaza, that whether it was true or not, we got a lot of eyebrows up, and so my question, I go, comes back to that. So when we say hotels, we're not, we're not saying that a luxury condo could not be built in the plaza area above one of the businesses. So say, you know, I'm not going to even mention names, but if there was a business that needed to have a different business model because they're not successful in what they thought and they needed to add some kind of residential component, then they could in fact build a luxury condo? Or is that different than what we're talking about as far as a hotel? I'm just trying to get the understanding, because we do have different zones in our area, if you go back to the map, that allow for people to rent out in a different way than other neighborhoods in terms of overnight stays. So for example, as you all know, there are places that can rent just one night, and it depends on where they are located and what they've been grandfathered in to be. So I'm just curious about that part. You don't have to answer it now, it's just a question I have about this change and where we are with these places that may have a kitchen and may have, you know, the ability to rent more than 30 days, but they in fact could be a luxury condo vision for somebody that wants to be on the plaza. So I just bring that up. All right, so I think at this point, I think we're going to open it to public comment. So here we are at 7:20, and I'd like to invite the public to come forward. We're allotting three minutes, and we do want to hear from you, so please come forward, and you have three minutes, and we'd like you to state your name first. So welcome.
Bruce Abramson, Hillsburg. I'd like to request through the mayor if the slide on the hotel survey results could be, could be put up, because I'm going to illustrate something during my talk here.
I support that.
Okay, thank you. It's been a long year since our small group began this process to limit hotel growth in the downtown. Been one year. Our goal is still to lobby for zero hotel growth in the plaza. Can you hear me? Is that better? Okay. We wish to continue to lobby for zero hotel growth in the plaza and the commercial districts. The current staff proposal before you is pro-developer in nature, and my opinion, it's not friendly towards the community survey results on the hotel and the residents. I want to make that distinction real clear upfront. This community survey is a game changer. This staff report that was online did not include the community survey response on hotels. I'm glad that it's here now, but I was wondering, why was it left out of the original staff report, the online report? Also, instead, we have a pro-hotel supply study summary, which was included, and I'm wondering about the relevance of that, unless it has to do with the hotel inclusionary rooms. So getting to the survey here, this is, I've spoken before you many times, and this hotel survey result, I would really like to focus on here. There are two questions there, and the way it could be looked at here is that on the right side about the growth and development, total too fast is 71%. Seventy-one percent of the residents in this survey are unhappy with the rate of growth and development, and I think you as council representing your constituents should look at that and take it very, very seriously. This is the change. In March, this came about. Prior to March, you didn't have that. You questioned where were the residents on this? Were we an outlier bunch of people who came up? Well, we're not. We're representing, I think, the viewpoint of many people in this community. The left side there about the number of hotels in Hillsburg is also a similar number. If you add the about right, it's about 83%. So 83% are saying it's about right or somewhat too many or far too many. So what are we asking? We're asking that it's right, it's about right now. We don't want to see more growth. It's over. We'd like to see it, especially in the downtown. So very briefly, the downtown has 12 hotels. There are seven with five or four, five or more rooms for a total of 181 hotel rooms. The current number of hotel rooms are doubling from 426 rooms to 856 rooms. I counted the staff, I counted there were 10 downtown streets that have the potential for 15 rooms per block. This could provide with six of them, up to 90 right there. So in conclusion, there's not enough time, I wish there was more than three minutes, but I think, just to sum up, I don't understand why you would want to provide the potential for another six to 10 small hotels downtown that'll clutter up our downtown. It's an over-concentration. The general plan and the guiding principles mention that, that we do not want an over-concentration. So thank you.
Thank you. We're that little committee sitting together, Chris Herrard, Bruce Abramson, and myself, called Residents for Downtown Balance, and we've been hooting and hollering, and here we are. First of all, I approve what you, I believe in protecting the plaza. It's 150 years old, it's our living room, it's where we feel comfortable, and I think we can do that by not allowing the possibility of ringing it with high-end hotels, limiting it to 67 rooms, which is what was proposed tonight. I support that. Now, you opened up the can of worms, the staff report, by stating on, at the April 9th, 2018 City Council Goal Setting Meeting, so I'll say the City Council did, that they defined the goal to not limit the focus to downtown, but to hotel development in general, which gives me an opportunity to proceed with these two points. One, in November of 2016, we formed a group of six people to study the hotel situation and the proliferation of hotels, Airbnb, and bed and breakfast, and our research group came up with some numbers that are somewhat different than the cities, so I'll use the cities now, that as of right now, we have 200 and 468 tourist rooms, being a room with a key. Approved and in construction are 391. So this idea that we have enough now or too many, let's face it, we're going to have 859 using the cities' data, no matter what, because they're under construction. The current zoning allows for 340 to 680 additional new tourist rooms. So unless we start taking a look at this bigger picture, we are going to be overpowered by hotel rooms. Yesterday, Sunday, I sent an email to the city council members and staff members about the lawsuit against the county for the county, the climate action plan, holding municipalities and the county responsible for keeping track of the greenhouse gases produced by tourism and global distribution of wine. And I had sent the, all of you that are sitting up there and several other people here, the letter from the, the letter to the editor from the attorney on that, that said each local county, each local city and the county is responsible for looking at the greenhouse gas production from both tourism and from global wine distribution. We're a major hub for those two activities, and we're not doing it. And so I'm pretty sure I sent Terry Crowley an email and said, are we going to do it here? And my feeling is that we need to take a look at this before we go full steam ahead with more hotel development. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Chris Herrard, I live on Badgers Street. With the S-Det recommendations on the table, the mission to prioritize a master plan for the future and to revisit the city's general plan has great momentum. Many are encouraging you to act swiftly. With the issue of hotel development, we also see the need to move swiftly. I think it would be foolish to approve a brand-new hotel project in the near future before we've had a chance to experience and study the impacts of the two recently opened hotels and those destined for the near future. So thank all of you, I thank all of you very much for bringing the hotel issue back to the agenda tonight. According to last spring's survey, there are many people in Hillsburg who simply don't want to see more hotels. A local citizens group seems poised to put a citywide hotel ban ordinance before the voters. If that happened, I think it would pass easily. So whatever the city council decides as far as zoning and requirements for allowing new hotels, it simply must reflect hesitance to add to our stock of tourist rooms. It must be prohibitive in spirit. In my opinion, the recommendations from staff do not go far enough. A CUP plan should leave only a narrow door open for another hotel. In order to be in sync with the public will, an additional hotel should have to present rare and extraordinary gifts to our community, aside from just economic invigoration. Mitigating negative impacts is important, but you must do more. Any new hotels should have to present such tangible and exciting benefits to the entire community that would be greeted with gratitude, with applause. It's imaginable, but this is a very tall order. The town would do, would be much more easily pleased if the city council were to acknowledge that the current and forthcoming onslaught of hotels is coming with a strong possibility of negative impacts to our town's livability, and accordingly would draw a hard line against adding any more, especially downtown. The CUP route, on the other hand, is not easy. It will be challenging for you to demonstrate that yet another new hotel would not be contributing to the challenges that Hillsburg faces. But if the door needs to remain open, I trust that you can create a set of exacting conditions for approval of a new hotel. As I said, many people are strictly opposed to any further increase in hotels. Should you adopt a CUP plan or the staff recommendations tonight, then the responsibility for creating a vision of a hotel project that would have their support and the town's support is in your hands. I look forward to hearing your ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council regarding this issue? Please come forward. Thank you, welcome.
I'm Tom Rackerby, I live and work in Hillsburg. I work downtown, have an office downtown. Parking is an issue. Hey, parking enforcement guys are great, by the way. I was going over your report here today on this, and I'm going to do a little more, more practical matter regarding these issues. Of course, you have people who are for it and against it and fighting back and forth, and debate is good. I'm glad we finally got this to the table, we're talking about it, we're got it on the table, we're going to tear it up and do whatever it is. Looking at the report, first of all... Looking at the report, first of all, one thing they don't consider is infrastructure. How are we going to, how are we going to get water and sewer to these buildings? Now, I know you're trucking sewage across town to pour in other manholes and this sort of thing. That would tell me there's an infrastructure problem. And no one's really addressed that in any kind of report that I've ever seen. The other thing that has to come up is, what about if we have a fire? If we have to evacuate the town? Now lately, with the fires we've had, Calistoga was evacuated, up in Lake County, they were evacuated. I haven't seen any kind of fire evacuation plan at all. If we have 1,000 more people here in town and only two exits over here to do, how are we going to get out? No one's ever addressed that issue. Also, on the area of, you know, you have these certain guidelines that we're going to have, it's great to put guidelines up, but if you don't enforce them, then they mean nothing, kind of like the vacation rental houses that we have here in town. Also, looking at this report, I don't really think that the city management right now, looking at the planning commission report and this sort of thing, has the expertise to manage these kinds of grandiose projects that we're putting out there right now. They don't, they're basing their conclusions and their limitations on politics and not reality. And so that's what we have to really look at on that. And finally, can we change the name from affordable housing to deed-restricted housing? We talk about low-income housing and affordable housing, and really, it's deed-restricted housing. We don't want to create a second-class citizenry in town, because we're kind of like all here together, you know, as one community, rather than having to make people different classes. That would be a good thing to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us regarding the issue of hotels in the downtown area and understanding what we want to do next? Thank you, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Warren Watkins, I live in Hillsburg. And I just want to say a few words and add to a little bit of what's been said already by others, which I agree to much of it. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for actually taking on this hotel issues when other councils wouldn't. And I've been up here before and have said that a hotel limitation option will gain public confidence in this council. And many of us will take that to the ballot box and pass a GMO amendment. Not surprisingly, our voting public is quite unified on limiting new and larger hotels in town, particularly, as you know, in the downtown district. City surveys and workshops have told us at large percentages to reverse this hotel building spree. Overnight visitors and maybe up to 856, I'm hearing, hotel rooms is the first step to many of them buying real estate here, bringing the unwanted impacts of second homes and second-home rentals. But despite citizen unity on second homes and hotels, we continue to see more and even larger lodging being built or in the pipeline. But you're here to listen tonight, I hope, and you are hearing that message. So let's take a vote, let's take a vote, do some of the things the staff is bringing up to ban new hotels in our downtown area. It may be a second vote on what to do with hotels in the rest of the town. Happy voters will support a strong position by the city on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council this night? Okay.
Doug Pyle, I've been a resident in Hillsburg since 1974, and I've seen a lot of changes. I raised two issues. Number one, more hotels, more rooms means more people working with minimal or low-wage jobs needing to commute into town, further clogging traffic and making life difficult for them just to come here to make a bare pittance of a living while somebody else is making a lot of money off of 400 unnecessary hotel rooms. Hillsburg is doing quite well at the present time. Why kill it by putting in 500 more hotel rooms? If you're going to put them in, put them away from downtown and provide a shuttle service for the community, not only the people in the hotels, the shuttle service would pay for itself to get people from the north end of town where we have, what, proposed 300 units going in? Get them downtown, which would ease our traffic congestion and would make it much more pleasant for me and the people that I know to come downtown, find a parking place, and maybe do some shopping here. Bear those things in mind as you think about adding another 500 rooms and 700 jobs that are minimal wage.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Jim Winston, Hillsburg. I just want to go on the public record and say that I'm really opposed to more hotels. That's going to take us in totally the wrong direction. You know, we need to, you know, stop this craziness. It's totally insane. And that's just my words, that's what I hear from people all the time. And I have a lot of cross-section between my friends and acquaintances, and I hear the same thing from them on a regular basis. You know, who are we? What do we want to be? And where we're going currently with the direction we were going with hotels is, you know, we're losing our identity, which is really important to the people in Hillsburg, is small-time character and quality of life. That showed up on the first two questions of the survey, and that was really critically important. And now we're ending up with a bunch of people bouncing beer cans off the walls on the weekends. And I just don't think that we want to be known as a party town. I think that we need to really take a very precious look at, you know, our community and say, do we want to be a tourist trap? Do we want to be a hotel Mecca? You know, who are we and what do we want to be? So I ask you to consider that.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, council. I'm Joan Birler. I didn't get up and speak when we were talking about S-Stat, and I'm very proud to have been a part of that. And I want to direct your attention to the bottom right-hand corner, bottom left-hand corner of the mural, which talks about if nothing changes in 20 years, our town will be a town of tourists and hotels. On the other hand, if we do succeed in creating a balance in our town, we'll be an authentic town where we can all feel proud to live and participate in an integrated community. And I think adding hotels is going in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address us regarding this topic? Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ariel Kelly. I support the inclusionary housing requirement of this legislation, but I wouldn't limit the housing to be included onsite. I think that there are always unique circumstances with each property where you could end up actually getting more housing built if it could be allowed to be built on another property that the developer also owns. You just never know the circumstances, and I would hate for it to be limited to onsite if you could actually get more housing in an offsite location but in town. As suggested by staff, I would not limit it to one and two bedrooms only. There is a huge demand for three bedrooms. They are the most expensive to build. And as we saw with Hotel Trio, they only built two separate three-bedroom units, and there was a huge waiting list for those units, especially at the 80% AMI level where only one was built. In terms of the level of affordability, as suggested by staff, to be low and moderate, I would actually suggest that, and I want to know what that is specifically defined at, but I would suggest that the affordability level be up to 80% AMI. As you may know, low-income housing tax credits, or LIHTC, typically only apply to up to 60% AMI. And we know that there are many residents in Hillsburg that make between 60 and 80% AMI, often who work in the hospitality industry, who are in need of housing, and those 60% to 80% AMI units are very expensive to build. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of public funds available in that price range, or that level of affordability range, so I would include that in the recommendation. If you do support tonight's staff recommendation, to me, that's a signaling to developers that new hotels with more than 15 rooms desired will have to be located outside of the center of town. And so if housing must be built onsite, we're creating a policy that puts more housing away from the center of town, which requires more car trips, not encouraging walkability, and leading to increased congestion. I do, I am concerned that we're taking a small focus on a small but very important geographic region of our town, but I don't think we're solving a broader problem. To me, by limiting hotel development on the plaza, which I don't disagree with, signals to developers that we want hotels in other areas. We're not looking at the entire picture of the city, and I worry that we, by still allowing parcels that are by right or conditional use, we are continuing to put that sign out saying we do want hotels in these other areas. And I don't think that those are environmentally friendly policies by creating more shuttles or more cars driving to the center of town, which is the hub of energy. Not to mention all of the new hotel development happening in Windsor. The Windsor Town Council is actively seeking a hotel on the Windsor Town Green, and those tourists are going to be driving back and forth to Hillsburg, but the big difference is we don't get that TOT money. So tourism and tourists will continue, and I think that it's going to be an ongoing job to manage it, but we need to take a holistic approach. And to me, this is a great first step, but it needs to continue and look at the bigger picture. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Brian Sommer speaking again, and I just wanted to say I was remiss earlier, so I apologize. Thank you for making the financial contribution to S-Stat. I meant to say that, but I forgot. So we really do appreciate that. So I love it. We have 47% and 47 cents on one side. We're only going to look at the 71%. We're not going to look at how many hotels were built over 16 rooms previously to this year. I think that's a very important thing that we should look at, because when you look at numbers, they don't always tell the whole story. But this does tell a story, and it's, to me, it says that we're building a lot of hotel rooms in a short amount of time, and I agree with that. Now, I have a lot of questions. Can we go to slide number two? Are those the recommendations for the?
Just to clarify, you're not allowed to ask questions during public comment. I mean, you can, you can, yeah, they answer them later, so you'll just basically.
Oh, yeah, I knew that. But. Okay, good. Thank you. Slide number two, I think it's the recommended actions on the printout that I have anyway. So I mean, I think it's a council member, Hagley, asked, are these the recommendations? And was told no, that they're not. So I'd like to know who came up with this report and if a consultant was used. You answered that a little bit earlier, but where did the number 15 come from? Is that a number that was made up? Was a hotel developer consulted on how much real estate cost, development cost, and capital is needed to build a hotel and what the return on the investment will be once it's built? And then if I have a corner lot in the seedy area, do I get 30 units since it's technically on two blocks? Or do I get 15? And then who owns the corner units? Does some member of our community own more corner lots right now than others? The same for the 67. Just, I know that's the number of existing rooms that are here now, but just curious, you know, where the number 67 came from. And then I love the question about the utilities earlier, because are they adequate? I hear so many stories about the wet utilities, and when new people sign leases for spaces downtown, they're just crazy costs with opening a new business because they have to redo a lot of what's been done for the wet utilities and for the civil engineering on the buildings. So, you know, can, can just normal retail businesses cover those costs? S-Stat's already recommending that we build higher levels downtown, three stories to four stories. So, you know, RuDat said that we were going to need more housing, and we gave them a GMO, and this feels very much to me like a GMO. So I just would like to know how in good faith we can endorse like these types of limitations right now when we really need a better overall master plan before we make a yes or no? And then where does this fall in the matters of policy? Don't we have a planning commission and things like that?
Okay. And again, we'll answer those questions, we made note of them. Thank you so much for speaking. All right. Welcome.
Mark Lizajich Plaza Street, Andoucheum Hotel. So I just have a, pardon? I'm sorry. God, it's loud up here. Yeah, no problem. So one thing is, I would like to hear tonight, if you could clarify, not right this second, but these new restrictions, do they, how do they apply to an existing hotel? So like Douchamp has six rooms. It's a 1.69 acre parcel. It's one of the largest undeveloped pieces of property in the downtown area, that it doesn't have any firm plans for it at this point. Obviously, we were hoping to add some more rooms to over the existing ones. So I just want to know, would there be an exemption? Would you consider an exemption for existing hotels in the seedy zone? Up to a certain amount of rooms? Because it greatly affects, what we're talking about greatly affects us in specific and others, obviously. It seems there's an effort to encourage small boutique hotels, just by the way, it's written at 15 rooms. And as Brian was asking, I'd like to know where that came from as well. It's not really a viable size. If you talk to hotel developers, they would say the sweet spot for a small little hotel would be in that 25 to 30-room range, not 15. Maybe there's some compromise, maybe we could go to 20, but 15 is pretty low because of all the costs that are incurred. Then there's 15 rooms per block if a hotel's on a corner. Like Brian was saying, I had the same question. We happen to be on Foss, he happens to be on North, but we're both on Foss. So is it going to be both sides of the block, each are allowed 15? In our case, it's, you know, live or die. If it's one side of the street only, and depends how you're going to treat it. So I'd like to get more clarification on that. And then I was wondering, would there be a willingness to entertain an exemption for true onsite staff housing, where it was for staff only? And it could only if, like in our case, we have the room to actually provide that and build staff housing, where it's not deed-restricted, but maybe there's an alternative that's easier to manage from our side. You know, everybody knows, everybody shies away from deed-restricted. Everything is hard. It's not simple. But there are instances where there's enough property to actually do it right and provide exactly what we're trying to do, which is to house our staff. So I guess I would ask you guys to consider that as well. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak on this item? Welcome. Thanks.
Hello, Mark McMullin. Live in Parkland Farms. I just want to take us back to last Wednesday. I want to talk about a master plan. Want to talk about what Ed Starkey said then, and quoting from him. Quoting from him, he said, "We're talking about a master plan that really shows where stuff is." So it shows where the corridor retrofits are, where each new building and park is located, not just a plan that has some bubbles on it. It shows every single building that you're going to build in the next 20 years, and the parks, and the streets, and the way the buildings relate, the whole banana. I think that as we're looking at what we're doing in the minutia here, we need to think about the master plan for Hillsburg as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Tim Meinken. I just want to reinforce what Mark said. I also agree with Brian and Ariel. This seems to be a very one-off kind of discussion. We have a lot of these at city council. I think a master plan or a policy needs to be developed on what we want to do. Perhaps you want to put, and I don't, you guys don't like the word moratorium, maybe you want to put a stop at the moment while we study it further, rather than making a pretty long lasting decision here while we come up with an overall policy of what we want the city to be, where we want things to be built, what kinds of activities we want in certain areas. I know that's also part of the general plan, but I think it could be married with the master plan. I do have one specific on the recommendation of five inclusionary housing units, or one per five rooms. I'm not sure where that came from, because all the statistics I have seen say that it takes one employee for each room at a hotel, particularly if you have onsite dining, which almost every hotel being built in Hillsburg has. So I think that one per five rooms is drastically low in terms of the amount of either staff or affordable housing that needs to be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on the topic of hotels? Welcome.
Good evening, Tim Unger, Plaza Street. Once again, master plan helps to solve this problem, taking a holistic approach and taking a wide, fully digested viewpoint of what Healdsburg needs to be moving forward. More hotels creates more low-income jobs, which continues to perpetuate the cycle on the need for deed-restricted housing. These low-income jobs, we're, we're saying we now want to ho, house forty to fifty percent of the people that work in Healdsburg. This just becomes a vicious cycle. More traffic, more strain on infrastructure. And it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy that these issues will never be resolved. I had a terrific conversation today with one of you up on the dais. We talked about diverse economy, which we know we have in town, given the latest economic report that's been done. This is a, this is a chance to focus more on that and to be more thorough about working towards bringing in higher-paying jobs. Higher-paying jobs will help sol, will, will help solve these issues. Again, master plan is the difference maker. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Welcome.
Evening, Richard Berg, Fitch Street. What seem, what I, what feels like is being missed here are a way of looking at the issue of hospitality in hotels from a systemic perspective. Someone just mentioned hotels are being built with restaurants. What hotels are being built without pools? What's our water resource? I also wonder whether there's any consideration whether a hotel of fifteen rooms is a meaningful and sustainable enterprise, given the cost of land and what it takes to compete? Does that mean we're building more nine-hundred-dollar-a-night hotels? And are those the tourists we want? Water, scale, transportation, employees' wages and the size are all interacting separate vectors that make a conversation about hotels more reasonable, rational or reasonable. And it seems to me, some of the numbers chosen, it's not clear how they were determined and whether they make sense, whether it's one inclusionary unit per five rooms or how many employees it takes if you have a very expensive hotel that's only fifteen rooms and requires one employee essentially per room. So I just endorse what was just said, that there needs to be and could be a much more systemic and thorough look at how to manage hotel growth in the city or switch to other forms of economic development rather than what for us, because of our attractiveness, is really the low-hanging fruit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on the issues of hotel development in Healdsburg? Okay. We're going to go ahead and I'm going to close public comment now and bring it back to the dais. And there really are three separate things going on here. And I don't want to muddy it too much because I think we could go for a long time if we don't take each item. So I would like to see, even though I know people want to make a generalized statement, perhaps, I would like to see us divide this up the way the wisdom would be to go through each item rather than trying to create some systemic view of it. Because at this point, we do have a responsibility to provide direction. This council has had ample opportunity to have conversation around this issue. And in our City Council Goal Night, which was a pretty constructive, generative approach to doing City Council Goals, this issue did come up and we have exercised this commentary or talked about the CUP option. So I believe we did ask our staff and they came forward and city manager said August we're going to get back to this and we did. And so here we are on August twentieth, trying to make a decision about specific areas and this inclusionary issue as well for hotels. So I would like to not go all over the place, but because I think for time's sake, it would be healthy to just go with the actual.
Could we get some answers to the public's questions?
Sure, sure. I just want to make sure that we do that. And then, yeah, thank you. I always wonder. Thank you, Councilwoman Gold. Okay. So with that in mind, there were some questions. Did you want me to repeat them or did you write, did you happen to note them?
So I think the main, the couple of questions had to do with numbers. And so.
Was there a consultant used?
There was not. So the first, the first item has to do with how do we get to the number sixty-seven? And frankly, that number came from past council meetings. There seemed to be discussion about capping the number of rooms or not wanting to see any additional development around the plaza. And so that's where we came up with that number of sixty-seven. There was not a whole lot of science behind it, frankly. During this process, I did discuss some of the, I did, I did have these conversations with the city manager, city managers and other, I'll call them destination areas to find out what they were doing with, with hotel rooms, to find out how they were capping them. A city in Carmel, they mentioned that they just came up with a number and that's how they got to their cap. When I talked, took a look at what they were doing in Monterey, Monterey is a little different, but they did all theirs by zoning. And once the zoning was full, then they were done at that point to charter city there. And so we were trying to figure out if there is a science to figure out what that number looked like. And the best we could tell there really wasn't. We did discuss doing a tourism impact report last year. The cost came in, I think it was in a hundred thousand dollar range. And so at that point, we decided not to move forward with that, that study. That may have helped with this, with this discussion. That, that addresses a sixty-seven, I want to say. With regards to the five-to-one ratio, we do have a little bit of, of experience with that with the hotel trio. With that, that ratio is actually three-to-one. And so we're trying to determine what made the most sense to, would, would marginally impact, not, I shouldn't say marginally impact, would, would, would basically look at the downtown area, how could that, how could some of those smaller developments continue to, to survive but not, but basically, but not prohibit anything? And so frankly, the number we came up was five. There was not a whole lot of science behind it, frankly. The, the thought was we'll be able to have that discussion tonight to find out if council wants to move that in, in either direction. As far as the services to each hotel, each hotel's different. I can say hotel trio, they try and limit their number of employees as much as possible. They actually have a robot that brings, brings things to room service and things like that. Some hotels have much more staff. So again, it's a, it's, each, each, each facility's a little different. My guess is you take a look at what's happening with the single thread. They're, it's a high-service hotel. They're going to have more staff attached to that than, than some other hotels. So it is, it is a bit of a different. I think that answers the best I can, the five-to-one discussion. And the fifteen, as far as the fifteen came discussion, we looked at that based on previous conversations we had at the council, we'd heard from council. Some council members wanted to not see any additional development in the downtown area. Some were okay with having some, some development. So frankly, staff was trying, was struggling with what that number looked like. Taking a look at what was already downtown and looking at the potential development in those areas, fifteen looked like a number to start with. If council wanted to move that either way, that will be up to council's determination. That, that determines how we got to those numbers. As far as assessing the viability of developers developing hotels in the fifteen count, didn't take that into consideration, frankly. We were more concerned about what the impact to the downtown area would be with regards to what we've been hearing over time from council and the community, impacts of tourism downtown, the impacts of hotels downtown. So that's where that number came from.
As far as corner lots and making sense out of use like that.
Staff can answer that.
That would be approached. There was a question about if they're on two different corners, how, how does that work?
Yeah, a corner, a hotel on the corner would have, would basically be consuming two blocks. So that number would apply itself to, to both of those. So you would, you know, and, and part of that is that effort to try and minimize an over-concentration. So, so if I were to.
Okay. And then the other thing I have to ask, this question oriented that comes up for me, is this question of this council making a decision like this. Say we decide to do something, the next council can come along and do a whole different turnaround on this. Is that correct? This isn't, I mean, this is something that each council has a decision on, right?
Right. I would, I would, I would look at this as a starting point with regards to how the council and the community wants to address hotels. This is a, this is a kind of an in-the-middle, someone suggests.
Process-wise, it's not something that's final. And, and you do have CUPs in this city. Is that correct?
I can add to that. Passing an ordinance is as final as a city can get. So sure, a new council could come in and get rid of it, change it. Sure. Sure. In the same way that this council could amend most of the ordinances currently on the books. I would bet that you don't have time to go back and amend a lot of ordinances on the books. And you may assume that future councils might be in the same situation.
I can add, staff has really struggled with this item because there is not a whole lot of science, if you will, to support certain numbers. Again, when I talked to other city managers who, who have caps, frankly, asked them what the science was behind that, one of them said, "We just said, Uncle, we're done with, we're done with developing hotels." And that's how they got to that number. So we had a hard time really finding really, I know everybody wants, what's the science behind it? How did you, what's the, what's the reasoning behind it? How did you get there? It's really difficult to determine what that, what that looks like. We did, in the 2014 study, we took a look at what hotel development was in other areas, such as I think St. Helena, Sonoma, Calistoga. And we took a look at what their hotel development was based on the square foot or square miles and population to get a better sense of what that looked like. And so that's really the best assessment we can get, but those numbers are from 2014. So I'm, I'm not trying to duck the question. That's the best I can do to answer it. We could definitely bring a, a consultant on and, and do a much more thorough valuation of what those numbers should be. My, my, my guess is it's going to be similar. There are no other cities that we can find, at least in California, that are doing, even have an inclusionary hotel requirement. So this is something that, there is no guidance for the city to do that. With regards to limiting the number of hotels in the downtown area, again, we don't have a lot of guidance as to how to come up with that number. So that's, that's, that's how we did it at this point.
So again, if, if you're comfortable, I would like to go in the order that we've been asked to look at. I mean, go back to the three options or the three areas that.
I'm just going to have to approach it a little more globally than that, Brigitte.
Okay.
If you don't mind. So this, last month, I was traveling in Washington State in the Cascade Mountains. And I entered the small town of Leavenworth from the east side. This is up in the north Cascades. And as we approached the town, the, the traffic pretty much stopped three miles outside the town. It was midday on a Sunday. And we just crawled into town. And this was their normal Sunday afternoon traffic. As I entered the town, I could clearly see that the small town was way overbuilt with hotels. And for me, whatever the charms were of Leavenworth, I never discovered them because I continued right on through. I had a similar experience in Taos, New Mexico, years ago, trying to enter the town on a Friday afternoon. And I realized that whatever Taos was, it wasn't anymore. And there was no reason for me to, to return to the town. So what Healdsburg has to offer besides the fabulous wines and dining experience and beautiful scenery is an authentic historic town, which has a certain small-town charm that people find compelling, both residents and visitors. And that small-town charm is a very delicate thing. I work very part-time at a couple of local bed and breakfast ins as a fill-in manager. And I was checking in a young couple from San Francisco last Tuesday. And the woman remarked, "Oh, I'm so glad we could get off in the middle of the week. It's just so busy here on the weekends." So these are anecdotes, but we don't have to rely on anecdotes because we do have evidence and we have numbers. So the numbers are that at the beginning of this year, we had three hundred and eighty-seven hotel rooms in Healdsburg. By the end of the year, we'll have five hundred and forty-eight. That's an increase of forty-two percent. In the pipeline, we have Montage, already approved, another hundred and thirty rooms. That will be an increase of seventy-five percent. If we were to go ahead and approve replay and North Village proposals, that would be another hundred and seventy-eight rooms or an increase of a hundred and twenty percent. We have the survey results, say seventy-one percent of our residents feel that their hotel development is happening too fast. We're in the middle clearly of a boom. And this is not a convenience survey. It was a scientifically valid survey done of all the residents. So why in our right minds are we talking about approving any hotels at all? I just think it's, it's just on the edge of severe overkill and it's time to be responsible and take a pause. If we find that our, our city is dead and quiet and no longer bustling and lively as it is now, we can change that policy later on. But for now, I just feel like we need to put on the brakes. And I think I would go with option one for the plaza and I would go for similar option for the whole rest of the town. We don't need any more hotels right now. That's what I think.
All right. And who would like to follow? Thank you.
Actually, if I could have some, a couple of quick questions to clarify. I think there were some that were addressed, that were raised it. I'd like to follow up on. So first of all, so with the proposed fifteen per block, I know that there's all, there's the restriction on the residential facing, right? How many blocks total in the, in the CD would be eligible?
I can't answer that in terms of an exact number, but I can bring you back to the exhibit. And you can kind of, you can see here, and you have to keep in mind that if you're, depending on what the proposal is or the direction is from the council, that it's not just, if it's green, that there's room for fifteen, it's fifteen less what's already there. And so for example, let's use this block up here where you have single thread in the corner with five rooms. That would suggest that you have capacity for, or would have the capacity for ten more units on that block face and, or ten on that, or five and five. So you could count those, those up to kind of get a sense, but I, it's not, it's not a huge amount of potential because you're looking at both sides of the street every time you look at a block.
I guess, I guess from going with that is if you were to look at a total number of, of, given the number of blocks with your admittedly kind of not very scientific method of coming up with, with that number, how, what would be a total? Just going with that proposal, fifteen per block, roughly how many would, total are we talking about? I'm, I'm putting you on the spot for some quick math. I realize that.
I'm just looking at, I mean, fifteen plus fifteen is, is thirty. You know, you're going to lose a couple there. But if you just kind of use that assumption that you're at forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah.
Probably. By now the time you did the real math.
Sure. And then the corner question, so it's, it's fifteen, if you, if you put a hotel in a quarter, max would be fifteen and you've killed the fifteen in each block.
Correct.
Okay. And then a question was raised about workforce. State law, what is the, the exemption of workforce housing? What's the definition of workforce housing? And how is that exempt by definition from GMO?
A city can enact any regulations that prohibit, that prevent the city from reaching its rena allocations? So rena allocations are up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. So units up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI need to be exempt from your GMO.
It's nothing to do with workforce. There's no separate exclusion for non-deed-restricted workforce housing.
No.
It's got to be deed, it's got to be deed-restricted.
Yeah. I mean, the city can decide on its own to implement separate regulations for workforce housing, but still, I wasn't necessarily concerned with that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak? Vice Mayor, are you ready to share something? Again, I really would appreciate some semblance of order, but if you want to do a global one, I don't mind it as long as you're happy and.
Yeah, a couple of things. Can we go to, we're slide six. So that's all of Healdsburg. And I sound like a broken record, but what we're doing tonight is the anti-master plan. You know, this is an element I think it's important to discuss. However, I do have concerns when, like I mentioned about the, the plaza, and I, the last thing I want is a ginormous hotel built on the plaza. However, I get concerns anytime we start restricting potential options for businesses to survive. And I'm not saying one thing will happen or not. We can't look that far in the future. But I get concerned when we start trying to eliminate potential options to help a business survive where they could maybe put a couple of rooms above and we're just flat out banned in that area. So that, there's a concern there.
I think they can put a couple of rooms above though, right? Because visitor, visitor lodging is allowed in the downtown business district, but no, oh, not in the, not in the plaza district?
Yeah. And this is just a hypothetical. I just want to kind of go through my, some of my concerns.
Okay. But may I just, in the spirit of dialogue, just answer that? The only reason I ask it, Vice Mayor, is right now on Porton Lane, if I want to rent a room out in my house, the city does not allow me to do that. And I need a business model as a resident in this town. And I am not allowed to because the value is community. You could argue it's a TOT loss for the community if I illegally rent a room out of my house. But this council, the city council before us, rather, has decided that the value of residents are as more important than me being able value of residents is more important than me being able to rent out a room or use my ADU as non, fewer than 30 days. So these business people...
So you want to use your room as a vacation rental?
I'm saying, you want to help these people survive. What about the people that live here? I mean, we have to conform to certain laws and regulations and ordinances that disallow us from using our property the way we want to use it. So it's because of community, right?
Yeah. And what I would say is, to make that community stronger, guests should stay in hotels. And ADUs and people's homes should be for residents and people that work, or... So that would kind of be my thought. So just a couple of thoughts here. I always get concerned, and you've heard me say this before, about killing potential options. I think we need, just in general, in the commercial districts, we need creativity, we need people to have options to be creative. And we start, we start, you know, putting boundaries and restrictions, and it starts to stifle that. And that's, I'm just giving you some concerns. Also, again, I think it's important to have this on a bigger scale when we're talking about the entire city. But in terms of, you know, we have a number of hotels that are in the pipeline, but we're also getting to the point, and I've said this before, we're kind of getting to the end of the real estate cycle, interest rates are going up. So whether this discussion becomes a part of the master plan discussion in our next general plan, to me, the sense of, oh, we have to do this tonight, isn't quite as urgent as this discussion needs to happen within the greater construct of the greater conversation where we're talking about the entire town. And I made the same comment in the ESTAP meeting that I was at with the stakeholders, was Healdsburg is not just downtown, it's the entire town. And the conversations we have have to go over the whole thing. Now, city manager talked about challenges was coming up. How do we, you know, no other city does a, you know, I think you said Carmel just picked a number, Monterey just said, well, the zoning cap and their charter city. And I think there is a metric that we can look at that goes back to this 2014 report, and I just pulled it up. And there's a list on page, what is it, 72 of our agenda packet, page 19 of the PKF report. Now, keep in mind, these are older numbers, but if you go down here, they list Healdsburg, Sonoma, St. Helena, Calistoga, Yountville, just as an example. And each of them, land area goes from Healdsburg four and a half, St. Helena five miles, and Yountville's one and a half. Then they go population, and then hotel rooms. So they do a ratio. Now, if we're looking at that in 2000, based on the 2014 study, we're at a hotel-to-residence ratio of 31. 31 residents to one hotel. And as, we've had this discussion, I've tried to think, how do we come up with, what's a good balance? What's a good percentage balance that we can, you know, we're not basing it so much on feelings because there's a lot of construction going on, but actual real numbers, like what is a supportable number? What's healthy, what's not? And you go down, Sonoma was at 15.3, St. Helena was at 16.7, Calistoga was 8.3, Yountville's 7.4. Now, just rough numbers using the population for Healdsburg that I Googled. Currently, with the 458 rooms, I think that's what we have right now, correct? 458? We're at 25.8 residents per room. If we build it all out, we're down to 13.8. I think that's starting to get to the number where we go, hey, we're getting there, that's it. But now we're talking about citywide. We're not looking at, okay, downtown. We're starting to look at a number that we, there is a metric, and I don't know if the number's 13, if it's 10 residents per hotel room, or it needs to be back up to 30, but I think that's kind of where we can have this discussion. And I think where we need to have this discussion that's healthy for the long term is, you know, the income generated from these hotel rooms. And I think once we get to the number of whatever it is, like, okay, for Healdsburg, there's this percentage, we're done, we're capped out, then I think the next step is, our goal is to keep these hotel rooms full. Whatever rooms are here, our goal should be to welcome the tourists here, welcome them to our town, we can get that TOT, we want those hotel rooms full, we want our local businesses thriving. So I think my kind of approach to this, and I think city manager talked about, it's not an exact science that we're trying to do here, but as I try to find ways that we have data points that we can talk about, I think the room-to-resident is a good ratio to start talking about. And what is that number? You know, so those are kind of my thoughts. Do you want me to go?
Sure, sure. This discussion is kind of going in a direction a lot like our discussion in February did. And so I'd like to be clear and just say that, for me, I think that, I think you bring up a good point, that having the ability to build a few rooms as part of a project, I think is a positive thing. But that's visitor lodging, that's not a hotel. And in the downtown, I would prefer that there would be no more hotels. On the Plaza, you know, take, for instance, the Sagatio Building, you know, it has a few rooms in there, 235, it has a few rooms in there. I would say that those are successful projects that have a mixed use of residential, in some cases, ground-floor retail, and represent an improvement in a way that somebody can improve the land and actually make a good use of it. But I think that, I think that the commercial downtown area, the CD area, I think is pretty much tapped out of hotels. And so I would be in favor of putting a limitation of five rooms per project. So that's all you'd get, would be five rooms, not 15, just five. And that would allow a developer to come in and do a mixed-use project. Citywide, I really like the, there are a lot of aspects of the Hotel Trio project that I like. I like that there were affordable housing associated with it that benefit our community, right? Those are deed-restricted, those are for residents of Healdsburg, places for people to live. I think that was a really positive thing, and I really commend the city manager for negotiating that and making that happen. I think that that's something that I would support citywide, but I'd also, citywide, I think we should limit the size of hotels in general. You know, the number that kind of pops into my head is 60 rooms. I don't know why, I mean, there's a lot of numbers being banded about that are just kind of pulled out of thin air, but for me, that's what that is. And, you know, we talk as a council a lot about, you know, you know, what are the benefits, right? I mean, one of the benefits of hotels is they generate TOT, and they support our parks and rec. But when you all of a sudden have a hotel that comes on the scene and it creates affordable housing, it also has things like a shuttle, you know, there's some of those impacts are being mitigated. But I think that in the downtown, I think that that's clearly near and dear to people, and that I think it's done, you know, as far as hotel development. And so I just wanted to get a clarification from Councilmember Gold. You had a question about visitor lodging versus hotels. I mean, would you be amicable to a mixed-use project with five rooms?
What is the current definition of visitor lodging? I've never been very clear about that.
That's when I made reference to luxury condos in a story that came out recently about somebody advertising for luxury condos with rooftops that are private. I mean, I don't know if you saw that, but that's a fear, and we are vulnerable. So I don't know if you're gonna look up text, but just to chime in, I don't know where you are as far as the definition of that. You're gonna look it up?
Do you want, sorry, I think there were two people talking to me.
Yeah, look it up.
So visitor lodging is, defining your code as facilities with guest rooms and/or suites, provided with or without kitchen facilities, rented to the general public for transient lodging, i.e. less than 30 days, includes associated services such as restaurants, meeting facilities, personal services, recreational facilities, and accessory retail uses which may be open to the public.
That sounds similar to a hotel.
I would bet the, there's not an extremely clear definition of hotel in your code. I would bet the way that it's distinguished is that visitor lodging has to be associated with another use.
So the residential visitor lodging is much more of a residential use, it's essentially a bed and breakfast. And if you go into the land use code for that particular use, it requires a conditional use permit, and there's actually a whole separate section in the code directed at those that actually limit them per block face to a certain number, and that sort of thing, requires onsite.
Just a minute. I just want to get clarified, because I feel like we're all over the place, and I agree you want to nail people down to a number, but I really do want to take this incrementally, because if we get too global, it's gonna get crazy. So I would like to go with the area that you, the three things that you had, the three topics tonight that this council would like to discuss in an organized way. Because if we get into, I understand we need to know the numbers, but I'm just wondering if you could take it back to that slide, please? The three things, starting with the Plaza, get to it, not that, but the one that had the three topics that were the beginning of the whole thing. Not even that. Okay, so Plaza Retail District, that one, and then, it was like slide two, probably, sorry. Yeah. So I wanted to give direction on Plaza Retail District, on Downtown Commercial District, and Hotel Inclusionary. I don't want to get all over the place, although I do think it's important to know what a luxury townhouse is in comparison to a hotel.
Should we have a separate motion for each one, then?
Well, I personally think it's nice to keep it clear what we're actually talking about in terms of areas, because unless you want to get global, then it argues that we should maybe go global and not go specific. But this is, to me, important to go in these areas.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
I'm gonna go ahead and ask Councilman McCaffrey.
I just wanted to continue really quick. I've only kind of heard specifics from...
So if I can, we're not asking for a motion, just simple direction. If council wishes to give a motion, that's fine, we're just looking for consensus on each item.
So for me, regarding the Plaza Retail and the Downtown Commercial District, I believe that even on the Plaza, with some of those deep lots, a, you know, a few rooms, up to five included in a project, could help support some sort of retail that's on the face that is a benefit, right? And so I would say, within the Commercial Downtown and Plaza Retail, I would support up to five rooms. I don't care what we call them, visitor lodging, whatever, five rooms per project, period. And then, as far as citywide, I would...
Let's do Plaza Retail District, please. Okay? Just one at a time? Can we do that, please? Because I'm running the meeting, I really would appreciate going one at a time. You start getting into all that, it's just gonna, you're just giving more of your opinion on everything, which is good, but let's go one at a time. So I'm gonna chime in and say, I do not support anything but what it says that staff directed. I would like to limit the number of rooms to the Plaza Retail District. It's a vulnerable area, and that's why on the, you know, look at the visual that we get, that the gazebo, there's a reason that downtown is being looked at in a different way than other areas, is I think the Plaza Retail District absolutely needs to maintain where it is right now. The Downtown Commercial, I'm more flexible, but I don't support changing the Plaza Retail District to add any more rooms on the actual Plaza. So I, that's my position, and that's what I want to say, because I think that that particular area is vulnerable, and I think that it needs to stay as it is in terms of numbers. And again, in the future, a council can say, oh, we need retail down here, it's not thriving, let's help them out. You can change anything, but at this point, I think it's time to shut down for that particular item, Plaza Retail District. So that's my, that's my opinion.
I also support the staff's suggestion for the Plaza Retail District.
And I don't, in that I do have concerns that we eliminate flexibility. I think we have a great planning commission that can keep the vision and what you see down on the Plaza. And again, I'm not for a ginormous Marriott coming in, but if one of our local businesses, you know, and I'll just use the Tasty Room or the bookstore as an example, like the Downtown Baker, the bookstore, is, you know, those are cherished businesses that help identify our town. But if it gets to a point where they need some help, I want the creativity, and maybe it's apartments that go above there, I don't know. But I just always have concerns, as a rule, to say, you can't do this anymore. And I, again, I think nobody's expecting massive numbers of hotel rooms down there, but I do like the idea that somebody could come to the planning commission, following our, you know, master plan of what we want for the entire city, and, you know, suggest something that might work with a number of rooms above the cherished retail.
So are you suggesting that you'd be open to, I mean, with the GMO amendment, isn't it going to allow apartments to be built above the Plaza Retail? Isn't that a permissible use? Because our GMO no longer will apply to multifamily units, so aren't you in fact allowing for that flexibility for a business model if they wanted to create housing for people?
I...
I'm just asking.
I mean, we're kind of getting off...
No, I wanted to know what your argument was.
All I'm saying is, my argument is, I don't want to limit somebody to, now we've taken this option away, this option away, this option away, and I guess my point is, I trust our planning commission, I trust the documents that we have on the books, to not let some ginormous hotel or some monstrosity come onto the Plaza. I think we're pretty unified and wanted to protect what you see when you walk around. And that's all my concern, is we're having a discussion about eliminating potential options down the road when it may be needed.
Councilman Yocas.
Thank you. You know, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to chime in with my global perspective.
Okay.
You know, I really strongly feel this is, I'm in that, I firmly believe this is really is a step, and that we really do, as a community, I've said this before, that we need to have a very strong and healthy conversation about, you know, what is this, what is tourism, how does tourism affect our community? What are the impacts to the community? And what are the, how do we maximize, what are the positives, what are the negatives? How do we maximize the positives? How do we mitigate the negatives, right? So, you know, and I've said before, in the HGID discussions, I think there is a definition of, a qualitative definition of the kind of tourism that is sustainable to this community, that this community can sustain. And I really feel like we need to have that conversation. We talked about the $100,000. Well, maybe it's a time we work with HGID, and maybe the Chamber of Commerce, and split the cost or something like this. Maybe it's a sub-project of ESTAP that we have these heartfelt conversations about what kind of, you know, tourism, okay? So whatever we decide tonight, I think is, I'm happy to have the numbers conversations, but I think it's a starting point.
I'm just curious as to what you think.
Yeah. So another thing that I also would like to point, that I would like to see, but it's not, hasn't been raised here, so it's kind of a new idea, another one of these Joe crazy ideas, to require that the, any new hotel be a unit that can be converted to housing. So that, look, let's say a hotel does go in, and let's say we have some, you know, tourism doesn't, whatever, some tourism interest phase in Healdsburg, well, now we have this unit that, this project can be converted easily to housing. As far as the impact on downtown, you know, yeah, I get that we, that there are, that hotels do bring business, but they bring seasonal business, and that in and of itself can be a problem. I would love to have more residents in downtown than seasonal visitors that, you know what? Look, climate change, more fires, more variability, and the fact that maybe people aren't gonna come here during fire season, right? Well, how does that help the bakery, right? So, you know, these are the kinds of things that I'm thinking. I would like, I want to see more residential activity downtown, and not just say, oh, you know what, downtown's, it's lost to the tourists, and we're gonna walk away and just let all the tourists go downtown, and that's it. I don't feel that way. As far as the numbers are concerned, now I'll go to more of the quantitative stuff. So just on the positive, I'm in the camp of, you know what, 67 is fine. It's a tiny spot, it's a tiny, tiny space. We've got plenty of activity, let's maximize the activity we've got. I don't want to see any more there in the Plaza, in the Plaza Retail. So that's my stand on that bullet point.
So we have an agreement, it looks like, that three of us are saying we want to limit the number of rooms allowed to 67. Is that the way? Is that the way this council wants to do this? We want to just be agreeable that three is all we're looking for? Okay, all right, moving on, I just want to make sure, because, you know, just because you get three votes, I mean, yeah, okay. Downtown Commercial District, what do you want to do? Does anybody want to advocate for a look at a different number? Or are we, again, maybe the map would be nice to have up, just to kind of.
I threw out a different number of five, and then I was in the process of having a discussion with Councilmember Gold about.
Well, the five issue, it sounds like something that can, that can already happen if it's licensed as visitor lodging as opposed to hotel. I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about, is these little two, threes here and there, is visitor lodging.
So my understanding of your code now, and I'll look to planning to confirm this if I'm incorrect, is that visitor lodging is currently only permitted with a conditional use permit in the MU district. So if you wanted to permit it with or without a conditional use permit in the Downtown Commercial District, we would need to make that revision to your code.
Oh, it's not currently permitted?
No.
So the ones that exist are outside the downtown? Like, for example, the ones, there's a couple of them, they're right by the roundabout.
So there, are you talking about visitor lodging or vacation rentals?
I want to, I'll help clarify.
Yes.
There's, well, there's three different types of visitor lodging here in Healdsburg in terms of how they're characterized. So for example, in the Plaza Retail District, which you just talked about, the only type of visitor lodging that's allowed in that area is a hotel or motel. Residential visitor lodging is not permitted, and vacation rentals are not permitted. So moving on to the Downtown Commercial District, for that particular area, you've got, it's the only area where you can actually have a vacation rental, but that's subject to a CUP. Hotels and motels are permitted by right. And residential visitor lodging, which is more of a residential use, we talked about that a little bit earlier, is also subject to a CUP within that area.
So again, just going back to the second item, which is the Downtown Commercial District and looking at numbers, there's a suggestion that we go for five rooms. Here's my question more than anything, is, I'm just trying to understand, when people think of this as this council somehow coming up with this quickly, we've been talking about this for a while. So I don't have a problem with that. I also have no problem helping and actually guiding the planning commission, who is appointed by the city council and is supposed to be implementing our vision. So I know our planning commission is amazing and they implement things well, and I'm always proud of them. But let's remember, we have to be the ones who say what we think is valuable right now in our city. So I think that looking at the Downtown Commercial District and limiting the number of rooms, I would be okay with five. But again, you know, part of this is the journey to get actual housing in our community. And if people's business models don't work for hotels, why don't they work for apartments? Which is going to potentially be a GMO amendment, because aren't apartments considered multifamily units? So if that passes, seeing some linkage to voter trust, then you have an ability for someone to create a different business model for above their retail on the business in the Downtown Commercial District, if they could go up. But, I mean, bottom line is, I think that's what we're trying to encourage, is more housing in the downtown area. So I really would think whether the business model works or not for luxury hotel rooms, which is what we have downtown, seriously, the people that are staying on the Plaza, I work on the Plaza in a retail place, part-time, and I'm telling you, the people that are staying here, they, I mean, it's a very expensive room on the Plaza. So if we can get fewer rooms downtown that are expensive and maybe some rooms that people could live in, it would be wonderful. I don't know if that's going to be a business model people want, but, so I would go five. I could maybe go up to 10, but 15 seems a little too much for me.
So I just have a concern about, I could go for five, but maybe up to 15. But, and we're all kind of basing it on feelings and, oh, I think it should be about this or about that. That's the problem I have with this discussion. I don't have an issue having this discussion. However, this is where I keep going to, we need a little bit more data on how the 15 was come up with. We have, we have the Dutch Camp Hotel that talked about potentially wanting to add a few more rooms and onsite. I mean, they're, I just feel like it needs to be a deeper discussion than just arbitrarily throwing out numbers.
Well, I think, I think, I think you're exactly right. And I think, you know, if we, if we were to pass an ordinance saying that, you know, no project in the commercial downtown can have more than five rooms, whatever they may be, and then we go through the general plan amendment, and we go through a master plan, something like that, in the future, maybe that changes. But I'm just saying, for me, right now, today, that's what I, that's what I say. And so I'm hoping that everybody else can kind of say the same kind of thing today, what, you know, knowing that in the future, we're going to do some more planning and stuff like that. And knowing that there's this, there's this desire to put in more, many more rooms, and it's, you know, it's a very valuable kind of commodity, and there's very little of it. Knowing that, I'm totally willing to put a stake in the ground and say, today, this is what it's limited to, knowing that in the future, we're going to study it more in depth, and maybe we can change the ordinance.
I just have, like I said, it just seems like we're pulling numbers out of the air to throw at the dartboard. And there's also been discussions about, well, we want more apartments downtown. Now we're starting to get into conversations that I think need a deeper, deeper understanding.
I think we're acknowledging that there's a hotel boom and that perhaps we are wanting to discourage that type of development for the time being. And in doing so, maybe we would favor other types of development that are, that is more useful to the city, such as housing.
So I like your, where you're going with a numbers-based metric, right? And, you know, one of the thoughts that I had earlier, and I've been struggling with it, but you're kind of talking to it, which is to say, okay, well, what's the, you know, the percentage of rooms to residence, rooms to residence, right? And if we were to say, okay, you know what, right now, we're out of balance. That we're, we need to hit a higher, we need more residents before we can build into more rooms. So if we say, if we pick that number and set that number higher than what it is right now, then by definition, we can't have any more rooms until we build more, you know, until we get more residents. That, that was the thought that I had, was kind of in line with what you're talking about.
It sounds like consensus is building on the number of five, so maybe we should throw that, throw that up.
Again, just kind of clarifying, we decide on the Plaza Retail District for staff direction. We're also trying to provide downtown commercial district. So what number are we looking at then, that we all can build a consensus on?
I move that we recommend the number of five rooms in the commercial downtown district for any hospitality project.
I'll second that.
Do we have any limit on?
We don't even have to vote, we're just giving direction, but I, I can call a vote.
Can I clarify though, when you're saying five per project, is there any sort of limit on the number of projects? Or is that per block, five per block?
It's stated that it's.
For any hospitality project.
So you could have 10 projects, and you have 250 rooms in the CD.
Okay, so.
Is that all three uses? Is that what you were contemplating there?
What are you actually suggesting?
I said, I said, within the commercial downtown district, to limit the amount of rooms in any hospitality project to five rooms.
So does that also include 15 per block, or does that go away?
No.
It should apply to the block face as well.
Can you go back to the slides?
Your land use code does not define these types of uses as hospitality projects. So just to be clear, are you talking about limiting lodging, be it hotel, what do we call it?
Hotels, residential visitor lodging and.
Vacation rentals to five.
Vacation rentals. Residential visitor lodging.
Wow, okay.
All three, all three is hospitality.
Okay, to five rooms per project.
Five rooms per project.
So to clarify, that second, that second item you're not part of now.
Block face, block face also? You change it 15 to five for both lines?
No, I'm just saying for any given project, for if, if anything wants to change, right? All you can do is five.
But why wouldn't you extend it to block face also? Just, I mean, it just seems like you could just cut it up. Yeah.
Sounds like you could game that one, but that's just what I understand in this town in terms of people's being able to do things.
Can I suggest?
Go ahead.
So we talked about the, if the number that was thrown out for, if we went with a 15 per block, maybe like 40, 45. We have a H2 is.
Maybe we should just hang with him because he wants to explain something. No, I'm talking to Yocas, not you. I'm asking you to listen to him, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So we have about 30, so H2 is 36, total units, right? What, we're also talking about inclusionary. What if we said 40 total in the downtown, 25% inclusionary? So if you got 40, you have to have the inclusionary on top of that, and that's your max.
Look, I'm just really uncomfortable with the, I think it's wonderful to be creative, but we get into this like explosion. Okay, so we can either say yea or nay to these things. So you are in favor of five rooms, but you're not in favor, I'm talking to McCaffrey, you're not in favor of number of rooms per city blocks. You're saying, let's just make it a generalized statement, five rooms total for any hospitality. So you don't want to have the second bullet there, that's not what you want anymore, you never did. Okay, all right, does anybody else want a city block to be 15? I'm just wondering if there's anybody who wants to argue what staff recommended, or against?
So technically, I have a motion on the floor, and there's a second to it, so I'm going to, I'm going to.
I don't know what your motion is in terms of relevancy, though.
I'm going to rescind my motion.
Okay, I just don't know what we're doing. I thought we were building consensus for staff direction. So I don't want to get too into legalistic because it's getting into numbers and systems thinking. I'm going to go ahead and ask Councilwoman Gold, and then Vice Mayor, please, after her.
I would think that you would be consistent if you were saying five rooms to make the block face five rooms as well. Seems consistent to me. It does seem like you could, otherwise you could game it.
Yeah. So I rescinded my motion. Councilmember Gold, would you like to make a motion?
Can I just make a comment?
There's no need for motions. I would propose that we direct staff, that we would want to just change those two lines, the 15 to five in both lines. That's what I would propose to direct staff.
And can we add that the direction to staff include what the impacts are for that? And a little cost analysis on what's actually doable or not? I mean, five may be, all right, nothing's going to happen. But what I'm picturing is, if we're talking about retail on the ground floor and stuff on the second floor, kind of a mixed-use project, I feel like we're, I don't like the idea of just throwing numbers around like we're, you know, trading baseball cards.
Okay, I got you.
And so I'd like a little bit more definition, of say, 15, this is what it would look like.
So you need more data to support the argument that that number will work from a business perspective? Because that's really what you're talking about. This council's talking about something, I think, that has to do with responding to our populace who has indicated to us that they feel we're saturated in a particular area of the town. It's a vulnerable area. So we're, I'm responding to that. That's why I've been sitting through this for the last few meetings, is I'm trying to get to a place of, just a minute, please. Miriam, please, let me speak. It's all about us coming to consensus. I don't want to aggravate you, it's just that I don't know how much more data we're going to need to make the point that our citizens are surveyed and telling us they don't want certain things. But if you want to limit this, and not, or not limit this, but have it more open, and you want our staff to research the implications of the numbers, I could support that, I could. I want to support you on that, that's what I'm getting at. Because I agree that you're curious how this is going to be economically speaking viable.
Because they said the numbers just, I mean, they kind of picked the numbers. So I'm concerned, and then we're just throwing around numbers.
Because we were looking at boutique, and if you looked at the actual hotel inventory, I pretty much studied it all weekend. I just was looking, and it seemed like we were going smaller places because we felt that those worked better with the smaller scale of a small town and why people come to our town. Like you said, we're not going to get a gigantic hotel, of course not. We're not going to put Trio on the Plaza, but we're definitely not going to have a Plaza if we don't start looking at how it's growing. And right now, just like other uses, it has allowed use for someone to come in and put in, how many rooms could they put in on some of these blocks? If they bought the entire Mitchell Center, what could we get for a hotel? Right now, the law would allow, our ordinance does not prohibit, a huge hotel to be planned there. You may say the planning commission would never let that happen. All I'm saying is, as a city councilwoman on August 20th, 2018, I'm ready to go ahead and take a stand. And if later we find we need it economically, we change our mind. But I just.
May I?
I'm just concerned that you're not feeling like, you know, the numbers are right, you want more data.
May I?
Yeah, in just a second. So are you feeling like you want more data for that one?
I just want a little better understanding of the 15 rooms and the impact, yes or no, and.
Okay, okay, so Councilman McCaffrey, just a sec, he really wants to talk.
So I move that we limit new hotel projects to those that include no more than five rooms and limit the number of rooms per city block face to five.
I second that.
I just want to be clear, I just want to be clear, you said block face.
Okay, so are we, are you, I want to get there. So that's, that's it, all in favor, we're not going to do a formal deal here. So all in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed? No, okay, so we have two opposed and three yeses to a modification of the numbers that are five and five, is that correct? Okay, so at this point, this council's giving direction in three to two vote to go five rooms and city block face to five. And we're talking about face, block face, we're adding the word face after block. Okay, and that's the direction that the three members of this council are giving to staff.
Now, can I just ask a question of staff now? Why are we not talking about hotels in the rest of the city? Why is that left off the table for discussion?
You can, I think, I think, Councilmember McCaffrey already brought it up. You can definitely bring up whatever you'd like tonight with regards to hotels.
So do we?
I'm sorry, so, hello, is this on, is this thing on?
It is.
So you can absolutely, you can absolutely direct staff for that. That wasn't what our understanding of, of the larger discussion, but if council wants to have that discussion tonight, by all means, you know, another option, well, I won't talk about options at this point, but it, yes, you may discuss that.
Okay, so do you have a proposal that we get to that?
Yeah, I would propose that at a future time, we would talk about hotel limitations in other parts of the city. Outside of the Downtown Commercial District and the Plaza Retail. That's what we're talking about tonight, but I'm just wondering that at a future time, we can talk about limiting hotel developments in other parts of the city.
Yeah, there was discussion about shuttles and requiring certain connectivity if we're going to have hotels outside of these areas.
So it goes back to the CUP.
City manager, go ahead.
So, so a lot of the discussion tonight is about data, the lack of data, or wanting harder data, or somebody else take a look at some of this information. One thing that staff could do, which is not in the staff report or in the presentation, is go back and work with a firm like PKF or a firm like them, who did the report back in 2014, and have them evaluate these recommendations and what we're councils, specifically if you want to limit hotels outside of the PR and CD or whatever those things may be, we could definitely do that. I believe the report that PKF did was the neighborhood of 25,000, this is back in 2014. I haven't discussed this with them, but it is always something we can do, is look at an outside consultant to provide some additional data, if that pleases the council. If not, we can continue through this process.
I have no.
We've had enough, you know, we've been going back and forth. I'll just reiterate my initial comments, we need to have a much bigger conversation than a couple of data points. And I think what we, you know, if we can come up with something tonight, that's good enough, while we have, while we, while we, you know, work with the community to really kind of flesh out what it is we want to do. I think that's fine. And to the hotels outside of the districts we're already talking about, again, CUP, talking about, with specific findings based on the impacts of hotels specifically around transportation is number one. But I would defer to staff to, you know, give us some guidance on what kind of findings would be specific to a hotel use.
I think this council has to demonstrate leadership in the area of hotel development. It's a year-old issue, I think that the CUP comes up, I'm not even sure how to respond to that. My argument tonight would be that we get some direction to our staff so that they can start looking at this. I have no problem agendizing a bigger picture issue regarding hotels, if we want to do that. But my greatest concern is that we address what our public is asking us to address. And I understand there's business models and it's valuable property, and everybody wants to maximize their use. But there is something to be said about right now in Healdsburg's history, making a decision about what we can do in this moment. As my Councilman McCaffrey said, right now, I'm ready to put a stake in the ground, that's me too. If things change, then you can change with them. As far as more data, I'm not interested in more data right. As far as more data, I'm not interested in more data right now when it comes to that man, or whoever that consultant was doing that assessment from 2014. I think we know that. What I really want is to understand what I think Vice Mayor is asking, which is, how does this affect a person financially? Because that's really all I'm hearing, is you want flexibility for landowners on the Plaza and the Commercial District to do what they need to do to create a good business model. If that's something that the city wants to go into, but I don't think there's any data that's gonna change our public viewpoint, that we've gone too fast, and that we've added. Okay, when I'm done, I will call on you, okay? Thank you. I feel like I'm with my dad. So here's the thing, I'm glad that's on video. So the point is, is that I am trying, but I just don't want to double, triple hotel rooms under my watch, okay? So I am very hopeful that we can get the numbers down, and then if future councils are having economic issues, and the people that own Plaza Retail areas are having problems, we can help them. That's what city councils do. They come in, they try to help people. But at this time, I really hope that we can move forward and not get into a big data collection, consultants coming back and giving us understandings of how many hotel rooms create, generate TOT money. I just don't understand that, why we would do that right now. Because no amount of money is gonna pay us back for the livability and the sustainability of our downtown core. So that's how I feel about that. Thank you for waiting. Mr. McCaffrey?
So I think at this point in time, you know, we are here, this item is agendized, and we are discussing it currently. So I think that we should, we should, we should do something tonight on this, hotels citywide. And I, as I said before, I think limiting them to sixty, directing staff to come up with an ordinance to limit them to sixty, and to figure out an inclusionary housing program for hotels citywide.
So if I could.
I think that's a reasonable thing to do.
The only concern I defer to the city attorney is, we do have two projects in the pipe right now. One at fifty-three, I believe, rooms, and one at one hundred and twenty rooms. The agenda, the way it was posed tonight, had to do with an inclusionary requirement, did not talk about capping room numbers. So I would be cautious, and just, we may want to, if we want to discuss about an actual overall city cap, I believe that those two development projects should be able to comment on this, to see where they are.
Okay, no, I understand.
Councilman McCaffrey, you need to be in order, though. You need to go through the chair to speak. No offense, I know you're used to being mayor, but just could you help me out by asking so I can keep everybody involved? So now you may speak. Yes?
So I would give, I would direct staff to come up with a cap. Come back to us with a cap, a reasonable cap, and an affordable housing system for hotels citywide.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to talk about exploring a cap for the future for the whole city?
I'm in favor of it, and I'm in favor of the inclusionary requirement.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I would rather rephrase it from a cap to what is the appropriate ratio. So it is, it's not just a hard number. It's a, something that moves based on, okay, the, you know, number of residents per hotel room. And I think that's a pretty quick survey that could be done. And then we could have a discussion about what's appropriate and what's not, based on the number of residents per hotel room. Because there has to be some other numbers that we can pull out of that, that relates to TOT, and saying, okay, we need to have at least this much based on occupancy and vacancy. So from an economic standpoint, we need this much. However, from a balance standpoint, we want here. And then we can start to come up with it. I'm always more in favor of ratios that, you know, can move. But we've established kind of our guideline of that's where the balance is. I feel like we've seen what's happened with the GMO, where you put a hard cap on something, and it's like squeezing a balloon. It affects stuff elsewhere. I think we need something that's percentage-based and tied to, you know, a number, and it's a ratio that there's are, you know, instead of a cap, it's more of a ratio that's tied to number of residents per hotel room. And I think that's the appropriate way to look at something like this for talking citywide.
Councilman Neokis?
Yeah, I mean, I've said before, I think that I like that approach, too. And I think that if we set that, well, we'd have to go through staff. But I think what I, the other thing, reason why I like that approach is that you're kind of already establishing the focus on this concept of sustainability. In other words, you, there's like, if you have like, if you're requiring a certain number of residents per hotel room, then you're kind of setting us up for like a buffer. So that the number of residents buffers the impact of the tourists. So if you have plenty of residents, well, a couple more visitors, it's not, it's not as big of an impact. So.
And the irony in all that is that this council has really wanted to understand how many people actually live in the houses that are in Hillsburg. And so even when you talk about numbers, and you brought forth that older number of fewer than 12,000 people living in this town, we still don't really know who lives in this town in terms of numbers. And I know that everyone says we're exaggerating, that there's vacant homes. But, so I guess I just think when you start talking numbers, it's really hard to quantify those. So I really have a hard time saying that your numbers and you did your ratio, I don't think there's 11,700 people living in this town.
But we could use.
Multi-family basis.
No, we could use the population count that's, you know, generated from the state or something. There's some identifiable number that, we're not arguing about the number. We're, that's set.
Okay, you believe in some number.
It's an Excel spreadsheet. As a number changes, things change.
Maybe, maybe it's the number of multifamily rentals, or.
I think, anyway, most, the reason I came up, didn't come up with that, but the PKF report has a ratio of population to hotel rooms. And I thought, oh, that's a good way to look at it. In 2014, we were at thirty-one people to one hotel room, and Yonville was 7.4 to one. I'm like, okay, well, there's a big difference. That's where we can have the discussion. The final point I wanted to make about parking is, I do have concerns about everything being pushed out, which then encourages more driving and parking downtown. That said, I think there's a lot we can do to mitigate impacts of, you know, hotels with parking management, et cetera, et cetera.
I didn't get where we were with the inclusionary. Do you want to move forward with the inclusionary?
That's where we're going, yeah. So what do you think? Do you want to just go exactly what this is, in terms of what our staff is recommending? Does anybody have any comments on that? Councilwoman Gold, yeah?
I'm in favor of pursuing the hotel inclusionary requirement.
As am I, as well as staff to come back with a cap.
And I support that as it is, and I like what you've done so far. And I'm really anxious to meet with the Community Housing Committee because they are gonna come forward and tell us what their ideas are for that. So thank you. There's congruency there with that group and what they've been asking us to look at.
I support the inclusionary housing requirement. And my assumption is that the CHC is gonna come back with what that number is, the dollar amount they pay. I like the idea of giving developers options to purchase existing housing within Hillsburg to convert to deed-restricted housing. I like that concept. I didn't see it anywhere. I thought it was in the original, was it in our original presentation? That they have an option to, no, the inclusionary housing that they're, there's an option to purchase existing housing stock and convert it to deed-restrict. Yeah, yeah, so I support that.
Councilman Neokis, you do, too? Or, I mean, we're going down the list just to make sure we're all on board for the three things that we've been asked this evening to talk about. Although we could talk about other things, I concur with City Manager that we need to notice people about making changes outside of what our agenda had on it. But that's just my view of it. I'm just.
So the inclusionary is fine, but really, I just want to go back to that CUP. I think, you know, it's important that we have, that we've got teeth to say, you're gonna have a parking shuttle, or you're gonna have a shuttle to go downtown so people aren't driving down all the time. I mean, I think that connectivity point is super important.
May we, when we meet with the Community Housing Committee, actually have this as part of our conversation? Or is that a problem? Because once we find a date for that meeting, I think this is a very important topic for us to talk about.
Sure, so I think, not to get too off track, but the joint meeting right now, the focus is to come back with where the CHC landed on the four directives from council. So that will be the, that'll be the main part of that. And we also have Walter to present, or talk about the new in-Lufi's, because we're talking about adjusting the in-Lufi's for housing, which, I think that's what the intent of that is. The other thought we had was, as I talked to the Planning Director, maybe this is a better discussion to have a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and council. Because a lot of these are planning-related issues, not simply housing issues.
Okay, perfect timing there. I was having a hard time hearing you, but I think I understood it.
So to recap, I think this might be a better, better discussion to have a joint meeting potential with the Planning Commission rather than the CHC. At that point, we can, we can discuss this.
All right, so staff has a direction on those three items. We heard some other bigger ideas that we can get back to, and we definitely provide a direction. So is that satisfactory?
Yes, if I can just recap the direction, hopefully we can stop there. There is consensus to cap the number of rooms in the PR at sixty-seven. There is consensus to have any new hotel development, maybe not more than five rooms per project per block face for the CD. And council is supportive of the inclusionary requirement for new hotels. And there is lots of discussion regarding caps, not caps, and how we want to address hotels citywide in a much larger discussion. Staff suggested we can have that discussion with the joint Planning Commission-Council meeting at a later date.
As Vice Mayor mentioned, we didn't get into this comment, this information tonight. That's correct, right? The alternatives and all these recommendations.
These were part of the presentation, so if council would like to.
I mean, I just wondered if, I know that you were getting into them, and I wasn't sure if we wanted to just say that we all agreed with what. Yes, thank you.
If we discuss the cap on the hotels citywide at a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting, there won't be any actionable items out of that meeting, correct?
We weren't gonna do that. That's not what I was recommending. The inclusionary housing aspect of what we talked about tonight, again, it's hard to keep flashing around.
I was responding to what the City Manager.
Yeah, and I'm telling you, there's no way we're meeting with the Community Housing Committee to talk about the whole vision of hotels. That's a council issue.
I was talking about the Planning Commission.
Oh, planning?
Right, so I think what I mentioned was, it might be, it might be better suited to have this discussion rather than the joint CHC meeting, to have this meeting regarding hotels and the impacts of such with the Planning Commission, and it gives staff additional time to do additional research with regards to a cap.
I didn't hear Planning Commission in this. I'm sorry. I was listening for this, Community Housing Committee. Okay.
But if I could just be clear, we have clear direction on the three items. We're moving forward with that. The next phase of that will be going back to the Planning Commission, and then council will see that at a later date.
Thank you so much for the work. I just want to commend staff for taking a lot of different things, and again, making sense out of what we can do today on this, on this, at this time. So thank you so much, both of you. Really appreciate your endurance and your staff, and all the work that you provide the cities, that we get some planning that is bold, but also, I think, really necessary right now to look at. So thank you for your time and efforts. It's really commendable. So thank you. All right, so moving on, we have a new business item, and this is the Sonoma County Library Commission vacancy. So we can form a subcommittee to interview the commission applicant, or consider appointing Andy Ilkin to the vacant position. So I just want to thank Andy if he's in, in the house. Is Andy here tonight? So I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on this one, as far as just moving forward and appointing Andy, so.
You may want to open it to the public.
Well, I will in a minute, but I wonder if there's any questions about the process. Okay, all right, so I just have never had a situation where we, we had a choice like this. I was just wondering. Okay, so no questions on it? Okay. So is anyone from the public interested in discussing this, or giving us public input regarding this appointment? Okay, so the commission vacancy is up. Carla Howell fulfilled that, but now we're moving on. So do I have any motions?
I move that we approve, or sorry, that we appoint Andy Elkin to the Sonoma County Library Commission.
Second. Do we just do a roll call? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, it's clearly, thank you so much for being willing to serve in this position, Mr. Elkin. And I hope someone knows me, Andy Elkin, up here. Do we? Does anyone know? Okay, well, I'm just grateful that there's a willingness to serve, and he's a Hillsburg resident. Is that correct, City Clerk? Okay, and it's wonderful, and thank you. I've been hearing from Barbara McKenzie about this. Who's going to be our rep? Okay, so now, at the very end of the meeting, at 9:04, that fresh moment where we get to have a council report on matters of interest occurring since the last meeting, and expense reimbursement report. So is anybody interested in sharing anything they did that this council needs to know about? Let's go.
Yes, sir. Actually, a carryover from last meeting. I mentioned my discussion with Reg Elgin with the Dry Creek Ranch area. I think that it's important that we consider establishing like a, I guess, for lack of a better term, ambassador to the, to the Creighton and Dry Creek Ranch areas. I think that they are essentially nations that are our neighbors. And they have, you know, they make decisions, they have projects, they have concerns, they have, you know, we have shared concerns. I think it's really important that we establish that we have a dedicated ambassador that goes to, that is, you know, assigned to that, to that role. I think that we, I guess I'm proposing that we, I think the best, probably the best way to handle this is when we have our yearly assignments in January.
What would the activities be specifically?
Sorry?
What would the activities of the ambassador be specifically?
Really, it's like, you know, look, if, just like we have representations on various boards and commissions, right, we, the idea would be that we have one person that the tribes can come to, elected, not staff, elected, that, 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 those nations can come to if they have concerns about what we're doing, or if we have concerns with what they're doing, that one person can be the single point of contact.
You're not proposing that they attend regular meetings?
Nope, just, you know, I guess a bit of a figurehead, like I said, like an ambassador type of, that's the best word I can think of. Just that one person that they know, that they can go to, that's willing to stand up and be that, be that point, that point.
And this came up from a discussion with Mr. Elgin? Did he, basically, was it, did he say that he felt there was a lack of communication with the city council?
Yeah, there was a, I would characterize that in summary, that there was a concern. I'm also looking at the fact that the Creighton Ranch area is buying Salvation Army property. I think that's, has a huge impact on our community. And I think that's important to have that kind of, you know, point of contact.
Has the staff had much communication with the, either the tribes?
We have not. We've, I've discussed this with the council member about reaching out to the leaders, and that's something we can follow up with. But really, so we ask is, I mean, we can't really, you know, I think we've probably talked about it too much. But all I'm saying is, are you open to having that conversation when we start talking about the assignments?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, great. A second.
Thank you.
Yep, second thing is, I attend the mayor's and councilmen's legislative committee. I want to point out a, a point of kind of like, the legislative platform rules and procedures includes rules of how we approve or oppose motions that are made. We're considering some changes to those. I think the understanding with, of having that, that representation, that I have a proxy of authority, making judgments that I see fit around those considerations. If you guys are perfectly fine leaving that proxy of authority with me, then I think, then I think that's, that's my answer. Else, we can agendize what your feelings are, and we can talk about it at the next meeting. But we have to talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay.
So if.
So are you, do you want to talk about it at the next meeting?
Do you, do you think, or just give me, or just give me a proxy? Great. And then I think you're probably gonna want to talk about that stat, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just want to be brief, but three minutes, I think, is a good timeframe at the most that we use, so thank you.
Okay, so I'll go real quick. First, I didn't get a chance to update on NCRAs last time because we kind of ran long. So this was the email that just went out to all of the directors. Last week, the Assembly Appropriations Committee approved SB 1029, which is Mike McGuire's bill, after adopting substantial amendments. In summary, the new amendments approved by the Assembly Appropriations Committee provide the following. The State Transportation Agency and the State Resources Agency are required to conduct an assessment to determine the most appropriate way to dissolve the NCRAs. So I get the privilege of serving on a board that's looking to be dissolved, and to dispense with its assets and liabilities, and to submit that assessment to the legislature before July 1st, 2020. NCRAs required to cooperate with the assessment and to provide access to all NCRAs records requested by the state. Under the amendments, any lease or sale of property entered into by NCRAs after January 1, 2019 must be approved by the CTC. Also, that was kind of a big discussion thing. The continuation of the freight service from Napa to Windsor is. The continuation of the freight service from Napa to Windsor is specifically authorized. The state funding to resolve NCRAs debt and other financial obligations has, has not been addressed in these latest amendments. SB 1029 must be approved by the legislature and sent to the government by August 31st, and so we're really getting right down to the wire on this. So by our meeting in September, I'll have an idea of where this is really settling. And then I, I also wanted to report out real quick on ESTAT. I attended the stakeholder meeting for Planning for the Future, Economy, Land Use, Housing Affordability, and Development, and then attended both the ESTAT meetings, which is incredibly attended, I mean, it's packed house. And then I, I met individually with both Shelley Patton, she was the affordable housing expert, and Ed Starkey, he's the one that people kept telling, hey, hold the mic. Had great conversations with them, and I've, you know, have complete confidence in the ESTAT report that's coming. I've also met individually with, and spoken to the, the executive team of the ESTAT in terms of what, what are the next steps, met with the city manager, and I think we have a real opportunity to kind of, we have a lot of things that were already on the docket, from MIG to the general plan, to some of these other things that can kind of overlap with the potential master plan. And so what I would like to suggest is, we're anticipating the ESTAT report coming in, I think, 60 to 90 days, so maybe the city manager can kind of hold the meeting after that, or soon thereafter, so that we can kind of have a little work session to digest it, kind of have a initial discussion, and part of that, I would like to see some of the things that are already on the agenda, and how can we kind of weave these all together? So it's the community discussion, along with the, the things that the city already planned. So I think we have a real opportunity going forward, and I, I look forward to it. So that's my report, and I'll have more on the NCPA. I go to the, we have our Legislative and Regulatory Committee meeting on Wednesday, and then our Commission meeting on Thursday, so I'll have more of a report on that as things are kind of moving in Sacramento, and also, we just got a letter from Secretary, Interior Secretary Zinke, so there's a lot of moving pieces right now, so I'll update on that.
And I just want to say, in my precious 180 seconds, how much I appreciate Vice Mayor, just how organized you are, I just want to mention that. And you do show up, and when you show up, you come prepared, and you've been very present in some things I've been going to. In the ESTAT, I also had a very strong experience there. I was lucky enough to go with the Arts and Culture Group, and it was time valuable spent. It was really very, very powerful. Some of the framing questions, how do we engage creative people in our community? Some of us truly don't see enough of the art, and I don't mean just literally artworks. How does a community benefit from the arts? And never build something without an artist on the team. Even the way we communicate on the dais, and what we're tolerant of, and how we want to get to this, or we have a certain communication style. What I love about being on that Arts Council, or that Arts Committee meeting, or the stakeholder meeting, was that I was around all these artists from our town that are really interested and engaged. So I just want to say how much I appreciated being involved, and I felt like it was one of the best things that I've been involved with on this city council. I really want to echo your points, though, about the three of us going to the gym, and even though, yeah, there was some logistical stuff, and you could argue, you know, how do we spend our time? They weren't, well, they were expecting a lot of people, but the fact is, it was messy and it was beautiful, and I really appreciated the work that was put forth. So I would like to agendize the ESTAT for a future agenda meeting, not waiting for the report, because I think waiting for the report would not help the momentum that I'm hearing from the leaders. They don't want to wait for the report, for the city to actually have a conversation about it in terms of the city council. So my hope is that we could agendize ESTAT, even if it's for 20 minutes. I mean, you could time people, but I think it's important for our community to hear how the city council feels about some of the things that were already proposed from the agenda, or from the ESTAT people when they reported out. I would like to have a physical space, I'd like to promote and hope to get your support, to get a physical space for that. If that's where it is, great, but I would like it to be framed, or somehow tangibly always available to, to our community somehow, because I think that that is a gift that is representative of an effort that will keep reminding us, kind of like the council goals, as small as they are over there, the right, you know, there's a visual thing, it's like marriage vows, you know, it's like, you got to look at them, you know? So I think that's a visual that's, that we should accept and put up, so I would hope that my council members would do that. And also, I think this master plan, general plan controversy, I think it's a false dichotomy. I think that it's not so critical for us to, to figure it all out right away, but I do think that if we don't give them a physical place to meet, and we don't give a designated ambassador to ESTAT from the city staff, we're missing an opportunity. So I hope this council could agendize the ESTAT item maybe for our next meeting. I know it's hectic, but even if we just did 20 minutes of conversation around what we're doing as a city, keep the momentum.
I think we would be out on the fringes.
Why?
Limiting public comment on-
No, I'm talking about our comment.
Well, you can limit your comment as much as you would like.
I just feel like this-
But in terms of limiting public comment on a, on a particular-
No, I wasn't limiting public, I was saying this right here, 20 minutes max.
But you still need to allow public comment.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think it would be challenging to limit that.
So you think it would just invite more people to come and give input about it without having a plan?
Well, yeah, I think you would probably, that's not quite the question, the issue I'm getting at. What I'm getting at is, for, I think if, you would be out on the fringes legally, I think, to limit public comment on a particular item.
The question that came up tonight was one of our citizens asked, what does the city council feel about the potential for the future of the ESTAT? So you want to wait, everybody here is going to wait 60 days to talk about it in front of the public?
Can I chime in on this, Frisette?
Yes, please, please.
I personally would feel uncomfortable agendizing the topic before we gab the report.
Okay.
Because it's, to me, it's vague, it's amorphous. I appreciate your enthusiasm, I appreciate the enthusiasm of the public, but I really need to know what I'm talking about, to have it be part of a city council meeting.
Okay. So, fair enough. So then, we're going to agendize it after the report, and we're not going to get, what is, what are we doing to support the ESTAT right now as a city to move forward, so that we're not waiting for a report 60 or 90 days from now? Is there anything that you, anyone on this dais would like to support in any way, so that we can stay with the flow?
You're asking if we have to agendize that, that discussion, right? I mean, we can't just make a decision right now.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just saying is, that's a rhetorical question.
This is actually a discussion, that was not on the agenda.
Okay. I thought that you could bring up concerns and interests that you are going for.
You can, but it's been a while, and there was a discussion that was not on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting as well, and so I'm-
So that's why I just would argue, the sooner this council goes back to the protocol of having city council reports at the beginning, the easier it's going to be to create a more authentic way for this body to work, because we get so handcuffed by some of these regulations and protocols that we don't get to talk.
You can certainly make that recommendation-
So we can't talk about it, because if we do, it'll open it up.
You can certainly make that recommendation at the beginning of the meeting, and if there's council consensus, you can move that to the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, so I guess we'll do that. But I do think they ask for certain things, and I personally like to support people that have already got momentum going, rather than waiting.
Well, I think, I think the suggestion is that we, either we wait for the-
We're not supposed to have a discussion.
Will we wait to agendize it until after we get the report, or we don't, or we do it before the report?
I'll bring it up at the next meeting, I guess, or maybe I'll do an illegal email, just kidding. Okay. So then the next question, I won't do it, City Attorney, I won't. Okay, I did get a note as the mayor of this town that our taxes have, our assessment role has gone up, double the net increase of Sonoma County assessments, so our tax role went up basically almost 9% from last year, which means that we are getting a lot more money, because as I talked to William Rousseau today, the Sonoma County Clerk record assessor, he picked up the phone when I dialed the general number, he said, yeah, Healsburg has an increase because the properties are selling for higher prices, and he did share that he thought that was going to continue because of the way our properties are. So that was just something that I received as mayor, and they thanked us for, for doing the work that we do here to create such high taxes. Well, I mean, you know, the county does get some of it. Healsburg Art Festival, we never talked about, I just want to mention, it was awesome, I think that some of you were there. And then wildfire season, I know I'm going over 180 seconds, some people need to go right this minute, but I just want to clarify, I did meet with the chief, and Chief Burke, and of course, City Manager, and I just want to clarify, we as a council have a responsibility to get some kind of a plan going. So I know that we have something in mind, City Manager, by October 8th.
We, we, staff has been meeting about that, that, and also the PG&E issue, and so we will be reporting that out hopefully by, in October.
Okay. So I really just want to make sure, as mayor, that I am doing my duty to assure the public that we have a plan, and that we definitely are going to be responsive. Okay, so are there any other reports out? No. Written communications from Community Services Director, we saw that, Parks and Rec, Transportation Advisory Committee, I'm going to be meeting with the Chair of that, because anyway, he wants to meet. Closed sessions, none.